Kathy and the whole team to make it happen. And Deb Eubanks, thank you for bringing the attention forward. I appreciate all the questions, all the information, all the dialogue we've had already. But I did want to address your group, but I wanted to do it in a manner where I could have the right people in the room, fire your questions away early so I'd kind of like get a preface of everything. And the way I figure we can do it tonight is we're going to do a presentation, several different items that come up all the way through, get all the items out, and then, by the way, Chase, Alex, Sheriff's Office is here too, so thank you guys, Code Enforcement here. I think all the right people in the room, County Administrator Mike Carbella just walked in. So what I hope for is to let you listen to what they have to say, our staff team, and then we'll take questions. And we're going to stay here until all the questions are answered. So if you want to go, what I'd ask is, if you do come up with questions toward the end, if somebody's asked the same question, don't go to the same question, just kind of repeat, but we're just going to learn and get ideas and get your feedback. So what you'd like to see us to do to help it. It is a big pain for me when I look at what's going on, very frustrating for me, so to have everybody in the room. Even Nancy's here, alright? Alright? So to deal with this issue, I'm very excited that we're doing it. We've had a good conversation from the questions that Deb had given us from your meetings that you guys have had, so I hope it's going to be very productive tonight, so hopefully we'll just listen first and then you can ask all the questions you want. Alright? Sonya, turn it back to you.
Alright, so I think the very next, I should have brought my agenda up here, I apologize. So the very next group I want to bring up here this evening, Paul, can you hit the down screen on there so I can get the same pace as this? Oh, does it? Okay. I will walk over here where I can see the screen, that's on WebEx. Okay, so the very first thing that I want to do is, just real briefly, based on the information that we got from, it's not changing slides, can you help me out here, Greg? Thank you. Based on the information that we received from Deb Eubanks, from ideas that she collected from all of you, and a lot of your input at the meetings you've had, the areas of concern that you all seem to have is our lack of county shelters, issues with homeless dumping, and that's not homeless dumping garbage on land, that's homeless getting dumped here from other counties, trespass agreements, the garbage and debris that's left behind, what you all call the panhandling, what we call dangerous use of the rights of way, restrictions on activities of charitable organizations. There's a lot of concern raised about all the charitable organizations constantly going out, and how that causes homeless people to go to the same place repeatedly, or stay in one area rather than moving on, the available homes for rehousing, and also low and moderate income housing. So a lot of those questions have been answered in the past when Sheriff's Offices come out to speak with you, co-compliance has come out to speak with you in the past. So we've asked some of our team members to get up and just discuss some of the concerns that you have. So the very first group that I think we're going to introduce, Greg, you're going to have to, is the Pasco County Sheriff's Office. So if we could get our representatives from Pasco County Sheriff's Office to come up, they're going to speak for a few minutes on some of the solutions that they have, and some of the ways they're working with the county.
Thank you, thank you so much, Sonya. Good evening, everyone. Good to see some familiar faces. I know we had the chance to meet with some folks, Deb, and some of our other folks as well, so good to see everyone. We're here to hopefully address some of the concerns you guys have. I know one of the big talking points was as far as trespassing agreements goes. So I have here with me our Major over Patrol Operations, Major Samborn, I'm going to kick it to you.
Alright, thank you, Alex. So again, as a representative of the Sheriff's Office, as Alex mentioned, I oversee patrol operations for the county, everything from the Gulf of Mexico all the way out to Polk County, and then from Hillsborough to Hernando and Sumter. Where the Sheriff's Office interacts with homelessness primarily at the point of criminality, right? So homelessness is not a crime, you can be homeless, that is okay. What you can't do is commit crimes while being homeless. The number one crime that we see from a Sheriff's Office standpoint is trespassing. Trespassing is fairly easy to enforce, once we have the legal sufficiency to do so. So what that involves primarily is an active, interested property owner. I've had several questions, just kind of periodically, about a variety of things, but all of those things are really answered with an active owner. I know that there's a couple examples where owners are in Thailand, and things like that, they can't be reached. We have a hard time removing somebody from a piece of property if we don't have a responsible party for that property saying that they don't want them there. So that's primarily where we're at. We also do some issues with dangerous use of right-of-way, as Sonya had said. That ordinance is crafted to avoid scooping up people in a large net, and so what it requires is multiple light cycles missed and things like that. I know that every once in a while, somebody will be driving around and they'll see a deputy sheriff, we'll run them off when we have the opportunity to. Typically, our deputies are not just driving for the sake of driving, you know, certainly not with their $3.80 gas prices. They're going to a place or from a place, and so the opportunity to allow a citizen that's in some sort of urgent need to wait, you know, two cycles while we address, you know, somebody that's potentially having a dangerous use of right-of-way issue is challenging at times. But again, those are really kind of the intersections of the Sheriff's Office work with the homelessness. So I know that there may be some questions at the end, we're going to take them at the end. And so if you would, we're not going anywhere, we'll be here till the sun rises, or till the questions are done. And, you know.
Looks like crazy now.
Yeah. So I get paid by the year, so I'm salaried, I got no place to go, so we'll be here.
And also, for any folks, if there's any questions from folks that weren't able to make it tonight, or just questions in general of where that intersection is between law enforcement and homelessness, we have a few flyers in the back as well, that highlight any, you know, top-line questions and frequently asked questions we get on those. And also, we have some flyers that deal with general crime prevention tips for all of your communities. So for any folks that weren't able to be here, or just if you had something that pops up after the meeting, you're more than welcome to help yourself to some of those flyers.
Thank you, big thank you to the Sheriff's Office for their representation this evening. I'd like to bring Patrick Arington, co-compliance, and also Patrick Phillips, to have them speak to you about some of your concerns that co-compliance can work with, and they'll briefly explain some of the actions that they are able to take, and some of the things that you can do to help.
Well, am I on? Okay. So I am Patrick Arington, I'm the Code Compliance Director. With me tonight is Operational Manager Patrick Phillips, so you got the Pat and Pat Show going on here tonight, welcome. We understand there is this little problem going on in the county, and we're trying to do the best we can to help with it. But I'm going to let you in on a few things tonight, real quick, and then we'll have the questions probably at the end. Code officers do not have law enforcement powers, so they cannot stop people, they cannot detain people, they cannot arrest people. In fact, they can't even force identification from somebody when the person is committing an ordinance violation. That is where we utilize our partnership with the Sheriff's Office. So I just want to get that out there, right off the bat, and let you know there's a lot of things that our folks can, can't do. What they can do is they'll come out and take a peek at things. That always sends the folks out right away, we get our eyes on. If it looks like something that is familiar, that's a county ordinance violation of some kind, then our folks will handle it. If it's something that needs to go to another department, then we contact that department and have them address the situation that's there. Right now, for number-wise, there's one code officer per 23,000 people in the county. Along with that, there are over 10,500 businesses, which we get complaints on, and there are over 4,000 commercial properties. And that's all within 880 square miles, and 22 officers to handle it. So right now, we're a little bit overwhelmed at times, we can keep up for the most part. Yeah, so, do you got anything you want to add?
No, just that we're going to be around here, I know you folks got a lot of questions, so we'll be around here, because you don't want to hold no more, huh?
Talking to Mike Pat for those that are on WebEx, please.
How about now, can you hear me now? So I'm sure you folks got a lot of questions, so we're going to stick around until this meeting is over with, and anything, you got any questions, just meet up with us afterwards. Okay, thank you.
Hold on one second, my boss is yelling at me. Let's see. What was that? Properties?
Let's go on.
Oh, okay, yes, that's Sally Sherman, by the way. That is Assistant County Administrator, she just reminded me to let you know that officers, whether they're code officers or technically law enforcement to a point, cannot just walk onto someone's property. Our guys can definitely not do that for a trespass issue. That is a county ordinance violation, or a civil violation, so we cannot do it. I can't speak for law enforcement, although I was a police officer in my prior life, I'm not sure what they can and can't do when it comes to walking on people's property, but it's very important that you know that we can't do that when it comes for these homeless campsites that you see. So if you see them, let us know, we can address it if it's in the line of sight, but if it's back in a woodline, or somewhere like that, chances are we're not going to be able to do anything until we get property owner's information and/or trespass agreement, which they just talked about.
Thank you, Patrick. So very important information, so I think it's good that you kind of understand that when you call the County Commissioner's Office and I answer the phone, or if you're in Commissioner Starkey's office and Jenny or Katie answer the phone, and you complain about these things, we work directly with code compliance and with the Sheriff's Office and identify where these issues are, let them know, but they have their processes that they have to follow so they follow, so they remain compliant with our ordinances. So next, I'd like to bring up briefly, from the County Attorney's Office, Samuel Brownie and Jessica Rodriguez, to talk about what exactly, first and foremost, the dangerous use of right-of-way is, and why we call it that, and also any other ordinances regarding how we can deal with homeless issues.
Sure, thank you, Sonya. So my name's Sam Brownie, and this is Jessica Rodriguez with me. We are the two attorneys for the county that deal with all of the county ordinance violations, attorneys for code compliance. So we can talk to you tonight, a little bit about what we can do with those violations, what they are, and also what we can't do. So you had Major Samborn from the Sheriff's Office talked about trespass from property where someone's not allowed. That's not a county ordinance violation, like he said, that's a criminal matter, we don't deal with those, but I would reiterate his point, that they need owner cooperation in order to be able to enforce those. With the county ordinance, like Sonya mentioned, we have under Section 82, 82-1 of our code of ordinances, it's the dangerous use of right-of-way ordinance, which essentially targets that dangerous behavior of standing in the middle of the road, or in the middle of the median. It's unlawful to make any use of the public rights of way in a manner that interferes with the safe and efficient movement of people and property from place to place on a public road or right-of-way, standing in the median, exchanging goods, currency, anything like that. So Sonya asked us to talk about kind of what it is and what it isn't. You know, like the Sheriff's Office said, homelessness is not a crime, so we can't target someone, you know, holding up a sign, or asking for money, that's their right to free speech. So in areas that are considered public forums, like the sidewalk, or a park, or whatnot, generally, that's not something we can target. The thing with the dangerous use of right-of-way is it applies to everyone equally, and it's a safety issue, you know, standing out in the median in the middle of US 19, you're putting your own life at risk, you're putting the risk of the drivers, other pedestrians at risk. So that is something that we can target through the county ordinance process. As to county property, we can have someone trespass from county property, such as a park or something like that, but it's only after there's been an underlying violation, such as a drug offense, or something of that nature. But generally, we can't just ask people to leave county property. As far as other ordinances that apply, you know, we talked about when the Sheriff's Office is having the trouble of getting an owner to cooperate with the trespass agreement, we have the ability to cite the property owner for kind of those secondary violations that are going on, you know, if there's tents set up on a vacant lot that aren't allowed to be there under the county code, we can cite the owner for that, hold them responsible, make them clean up the property, make them responsible for it, same thing for junk and debris. So, you know, that's when, even though we can't trespass, if we don't have that owner cooperation, we can also, we can go after the property owners to the extent, same problem the Sheriff's Office talked about, that we can locate them, and have them, and get notice to them, and bring them to court. If they're out of the country, it becomes a lot more difficult. Anything else?
Hi, everybody, this is Jessica Rodriguez. So I just want to reiterate and build on what Pat said earlier about us going on, as far as code going on to private property. If you're calling to make a violation, just be cognizant, if we can't see it from the public right-of-way, meaning if I can't sit, stand in the street and see the violation, or if you're not willing to allow us onto your property, because as long as we can see it from a budding property, or the public right-of-way, and we can determine it's a violation, they will be cited. So if you're going to complain about it, and make a complaint, and you can see it from your yard, you have to be willing to let our guys go on to observe it from your property. Other than that, if it can't be seen from the street, they can enforce.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Please. Thank you very much. I'd like to bring Kathy Pearson, our Assistant County Administrator for Public Services, up next. She's going to present to you her presentation that she gave to our Joint Cities Workshop, Cities-County Workshop a couple of weeks ago, and I think you'll find it very, very informative, and you'll learn a lot about the solutions the county is working on right now.
Feel bad for some of your people that have to stand, there's some seats up here if you'd like, so please find some seats if you can, that'd be great. So yes, I'm Kathy Pearson, the Assistant County Administrator for Public Services, and I want to start off by saying thank you for being here. Thank you, thank you. We definitely have a homeless problem in Pasco County, and we hopefully, as a community, are going to come up with some ideas on how to fix it. So that's why we're asked you here, this is what Commissioner Mariano is very passionate about, he wants to hear what you all have to say. So let me give you a little bit of facts first, and we're going to go to the first slide. So some homelessness in Pasco County by the numbers. So the unofficial point and count, point and time count, which is done by the Pasco County Homeless Coalition, is between 350 to 400 approximate unsheltered individuals. Sometimes I know when we're going around, we seem to think there's a lot more, right? Individuals move within the geographical area, 80% of the unsheltered count resides on the west side. And then you can see the age breakdown, 20 to 40 years old is 32, and the seniors are rising. I know, I was out today with Richie, and they were talking about a 70-year-old lady out there, that they were trying to find some shelter for, so it's unbelievable how much it's happening. So where is this happening? Next slide would be where this is happening. So we've identified currently 62 confirmed encampment camps, and that's coming from our code. 18 encampments were identified with 5+ individuals, and 2 encampments were identified with 10+ . So that's what we have right now, that we're seeing. Next slide. I wanted to just reiterate right now, what the homeless coalition, and what they have for their homeless system process that they do, and so right now, they have people contact access points, once assessed, they have what they call the brigade, and the sword and spoon that go out and assess these folks, they determine what list they should go on, they put them on the list, the people are triaged, and then when they match, when they're ready to get the housing, they're matched with an agency. That's pretty much what the system is right now. Next slide. I do want to talk about some of the things that community development has done, and that's Marcy Esberg's group, who's sitting right over here, that is grant funds that we have done to help with the homeless. And so they're called Community Development Block Grants, or CDBG. ESG is Emergency Solution Grants, and home investment is the home grant. So we put about 11.9 of these dollars into different things, and as you can see, the HMIS system, the Coalition for the Homeless, receives about 269. Emergency Shelter Services, which is the youth and family alternative, they received an HVAC system, the Sunrise Domestic Shelter, received an electric system, Steps to Recovery, got renovations for about 2.34 million. Emergency Shelter Construction Acquisition, permanent housing, and of course, rental assistance. Those are some of the things that our Community Development Block Grant has done, but we agree, it's not enough. Some of the projects we funded is the Rosalie Rundue Residence, which is permanent supporting housing, and I know Michael Raposa, President of St. Vincent and Paul is here. And we also have the Youth Lane Family Shelter, which is run by Catholic Charities, which has about nine families at all times going through that shelter. Next slide, some of the current services provided, so we just wanted to list some of those services that are out there. We have ACE Opportunity that does transitional housing, Rosalie Rundue, which is a permanent supportive housing, Pasco Housing Authority, One Community Now, the Rope Center, Youth Lane, so these are some of the services that do provide services for our homeless. The Housing Force Model, we do want to talk about, that is the national objective, is to get people housed. Homeless Assistance Approaches, prioritize providing permanent housing, put a roof over their head, give them the case management, people can usually strive, so that's what we're trying to get at.
Well, Commissioner Starkey, did you want to stop and say something, or do you want to?
Hello? I was at another county meeting. I'm sorry. No, no, just say it. I didn't want to.
I was at another county meeting in Land Lake, so I'm sorry I was a few minutes late, but I'm very happy to be here, and I see a lot of concerned citizens, like we all are, so I'm very glad you all came, and I'm looking forward to your presentation, and this is a very big county problem, and it's very hard to solve, but we're working on it.
Okay, so the next slide, some of our challenges, and this is where I feel that we're going to need all of our community support, and all some ideas to help with this. Right now, in Pasco County, we have a lack of low-barrier shelters, and what does that mean? So right now, we have wonderful shelters that will take folks, but they can't be on drugs, or they have, you know, they have to go by religion, or whatever the case may be. So our Sheriff's Department will tell us, we're out there, we find folks, but we have nowhere to put them, because we don't have any low barrier. So that's one of the things that the county needs to look at right now, is to find a low-barrier shelter. And there's other areas, there's lack of affordable housing, economic challenges, domestic violence, and the list goes on, but we definitely need a low-barrier shelter. So what our team has done, and what I mean by our team, there's been several of us that have been meeting on a monthly basis for the past few months, trying to figure out what do we need, what can we do, and how are we going to get these folks into some sort of a shelter, some sort of housing. So we came up with four options, and this is where all of you are going to help, okay? So what we're going to do is present to you the four options, what are we missing? There's got to be some other ideas out there that we don't know about. But yes, I think the county, our county commissioners are committed that we have to do something, the county needs to commit to do something, but we don't know what that something is, but here's some alternatives. So a group of us have been visiting what we call Tampa Hope and Pinellas Hope. And Pinellas Hope is in probably their 15th year of existence, and they have a combination of what they call tent cities, or Kansas shelters, tent cities with pallet homes, they've even gone further to build apartments. So they have apartment buildings on their complex. So the folks come in, they'll start in a tent, as they go further, they ended up into a permanent housing, either on their property or somewhere else. That's Pinellas Hope. That's run by Catholic charities. They also are in their infancy, they just hit a year for their Tampa Hope. Mayor Jane Castor realized the problem that they were having with homeless down there, she went to Catholic charities and said, "Help us, what can we do?" And so they purchased a building in Ebor City, it's an industrial building, we have gone down there several times, like I said, they're only in their infancy, they've only hit a year. So they're in there, and they've got 100, I want to say 100 tents, and they're going to be putting 225 pallet homes. And when we were there, just a few weeks ago, they were starting to put 200 of them. So what she explains to us, and how they, it's a 24/7 operation, people don't just come in there and don't do anything, they have all sorts of community partners that they get them, Bible study, substance abuse, case management, constant case management. They also just don't take anybody. What I mean by that is you can't go up to their door and say, "I'm homeless, can you help me?" They have outreach workers that actually assess them, they do not drug test them, the only thing that they check for is to make sure that they're not sexual offenders, that's the only thing they will not take. And so their success rate is pretty darn good, in Pinellas, it's about 48%, which doesn't sound high, but when you have 48% of the homeless taken off the streets, that's pretty darn good. And in Tampa, right now, they're at 30%, which they only hit their one year, and they're hoping to get to 48%. So that's one of the options, is the county look for a building with enough acreage to maybe house some of these folks, get them rehabilitated where they need, sheriff and all sorts of people can, now we have a home for them, get them out of the woods, and try to get them rehabilitated. She also, when they're out there doing outreach, the first thing her outreach person says, "Are you a Hillsborough County resident?" Most of them say no, they will find their homes, and then send them a bus ticket back to where they need to be, because she can only serve Hillsborough County residents. So that really impressed me when we were studying and listening to that. So that's option number one. Option number two, we could go, the county could just find land and do a tent city. And, not the greatest thing, I don't think, but it'd still be the same concept, they would still have 24/7, but just a tent city. So that was one of the other options we've come up with. Option three, just do a pallet village, just find a piece of land and put a bunch of pallets, and have, you know, an agency come and run it, and do their rehabilitation, and help them with that. That was another option. And then the last option would have been a congregate shelter. So a congregate shelter would be just buy a building, put them all inside the building. One of the things that, that's okay for temporary, but one of the things that we're learning as we go through with like Catholic charity and things, they're saying, the congregate's not the greatest because of, you know, they don't have their privacy, the sickness could happen, it just runs through the whole building, all that kind of good stuff. So it's not the ideal situation, but it could be. And so those are our four options that we have come up with, and now it comes to what else are we missing? And so at this point, I'm going to stop, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Paula Baracado, who's our Director of Support Services, she's going to tell you our next steps, and then we're going to be ready to answer any questions that you have. And we will answer as many questions until we're done answering all the questions. But that's our options, and Paula will tell you what our next steps are.
So good afternoon, my name is Paula Baracado, I'm the Director of Support Services. Welcome, and thank you for being here with us today. So at this point, what we're going to do is, we're going to call the names of all of those individuals that sign up to speak, so you have an opportunity for Q and A. You each will have three minutes to speak, don't worry if you didn't sign up, you can line up after the fact, we'll go ahead and call you, so you have that opportunity. But just keep in mind, after you have spoken for two minutes, you're going to hear a beep that will give you a warning that you have one minute to close your comments, and then you'll hear another beep letting you know that the time for your comments or your questions has ended. This is just to ensure that everybody has the same opportunity to speak and participate during today's session. In addition to that, before you leave today, you may have seen as you came into the building in the lobby area, we had all of those options kind of blown up for you to see. So you will see, some of our team members are going to be out there with stickers, so that you can press the sticker, take a sticker and just put it on the option that you prefer. However, if one of those four options, either the mix of the canvas and pallets, option number one, tent city, number two, the third option being the pallet village, if none of those options, or the fourth option, the congregate shelter, are options that you'd like to see, we do have some writing pads and some markers, so that you can write your feedback, so that we can gather that information, and then share that with our working group inside, in the county, okay? So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and start opening the floor for questions. Sonya, Sonya's going to help us with that.
Can you answer the question?
Absolutely, yeah, we will, we will go ahead, we'll go through your questions. After we run through your questions, as you leave today, please don't forget to give us your feedback, we'll need that, to take that into consideration for how we move forward. So with that, Ms. Deb Eubanks, if you don't mind?
It's okay. Hi, I'm Deborah Eubanks, I founded, or started, the Homeless Solutions of Wes Pasco. I want to thank everybody who helped make this meeting possible. I know we've been waiting a few months for this to happen, so it's finally happened. I want to thank Commissioner Starkey for joining us today. Where'd she go? We lost her. Okay, and a special thank you to Commissioner Mariano, I know you had to change some plans to make sure you got here today, and I really appreciate that. This is a sad and neglected situation, and it's long overdue for attention. The need for emergency housing right now... Um, the need for emergency housing right now is one of the biggest, on the top of the list. Um, so without further ado, I pass it to the public.
Chevelle Finney is the next person on our list to speak.
Okay, the biggest thing for me is code enforcement. Why is it that code enforcement isn't allowed on the properties without, you know, a TA in place? There's almost a TA on every place out there in Pasco County right now. So when they go out to these properties, why can they not tell them, "Take your stuff, or it's going in the garbage," and have a dumpster there ready, and make them put their stuff in the dumpster what's not going there? Why should it be the property owner's responsibility to clean it up when there's a trespass warrant in place? I mean, it, it's, it's kinda crazy. Then the other thing is, is there not a littering and loitering law in Pasco County? If there is a littering and loitering law in Pasco County, why aren't people being fined for it?
I've got Patrick Erickson right here and Patrick Phillips to answer that question real quick for you.
So in regards to the laundering, uh, that's something that code enforcement does not address, how to be the sheriff's office. In regards to the, the illegal dumping, um, if you would, or the trash and junk all over the property, ultimately, it's property owner's responsibility to clean up his own property or their property. We can cite, and we have cited, the homeless people, the problem is though, is when we issue them the citation, they just take off, and they're, they're at large. We have no way of backing them down until we run into them or a warrant gets put out on them.
But on, but when you actually go into these camps, and you tell them, "Okay, guess what, you have to leave," why are you not telling them, "Take your stuff, or put it in a dumpster"? You spent how much money a couple weeks ago to clean up Moon Lake? How many tons of trash, 112 tons of trash came out of Moon Lake?
Pretty much, yeah, about around 112, yep.
Yeah, I mean, but why should it even be the county's responsibility? Even, even take, like, when they, a couple weeks ago, I think it was March 4th, you had a cleanup Pasco volunteer come out and clean up Pasco. Why can't you even go and offer these homeless people a meal and a shower to help clean up? It's volunteers, so offer it to the homeless too.
We can only enforce what is actually in, written in ordinances, um, and that's what we have to operate under the county codes of ordinance. And unfortunately, it doesn't give us the authority to place dumpsters on private property.
Well, I'm not even talking, I mean, not even a dumpster, even a dump trailer, tow it to the back of the truck, you know, there's dump trailers that...
Yeah, the concept is still the same, dump trailer, dump trailer would be a lot better than a dumpster, because then you can just hook up and pull away, but, you know, if it's in the ordinance, then we can enforce it, and unfortunately, it's not.
Cause we've checked on every, like, almost every camp that we've given you guys, and there's TAs on almost every one of them, except for maybe one.
And the trespass agreements will be done through the sheriff's office. Now, when we do turn around and issue a warning out to the property owner, we send them the information to get a trespass agreement in place, uh, so this way, the sheriff's office can go in there and trespass whoever's on that property after the fact.
So basically, it's on the sheriff's office, so, but why are they making it on you guys then?
Sheriff's, I, I've never heard the sheriff's office put us on, put it on us, I know with us, you know, if it's in the ordinance, we can enforce it, but without it being there, we can't.
So, real quick, as, as we, um, when I opened up, and I told you that we can't do the same things that law enforcement can, that's an arrest issue, because it's a trespass, that's a criminal episode at that point. We do not have the authority to go in there and arrest anybody. We would call them and they would come out to assist with that. That is if a trespass agreement is in place, and they've been out there and trespassed those particular people, they've gotta have their probable cause to make an arrest as well. Plus, they're busy, they're very busy, and sometimes we can't coordinate the same time that we're gonna go and point it out to them and have them come there. As for the dumping, we can go, our guys can go tell them, "Hey, pick up your trash and leave." Nine times out of 10, they'll leave, and they'll leave their trash. What are they gonna do? They, they don't have any means to get rid of it, um, we can't bring a dumpster out and just leave it there until they fill it up. Can you imagine how many people would show up dumping trash if we left the trash can there?
All right, so the next, uh, next person is Amy Ravenscroft. Did you raise your hand, raise your hand? So you all have three minutes.
Okay, yeah, I was curious, um, what legislative options has the county considered? We hear a lot of, uh, "Well, that's not our department," um, "Well, we don't have anything codified to back that up," and it seems to me that there's an awful lot of things that are going on, and the convenient answer, and pardon me for saying it in that manner, but the convenient answer is, "Oh, well, there isn't an ordinance against that." So what do we as citizens, what can we do to get some of these ordinances in place? I mean, we've actually had people tell us that, "Well, you know, we can issue a lien against the property, but, you know, nothing really happens," or, you know, "We can arrest them, but then judges don't really wanna do anything with that information," and it gets really frustrating, because it seems like it keeps coming down to this ordinance. So I'm curious what legislative options the county's been looking into.
I think the county attorney's office is the best answer, or this person to answer that question?
I mean, yeah, I, I can speak to it a little bit, is there a particular ordinance that, that you would like to see proposed?
Trespassing, for instance, right now, you don't have the right to go onto a property, okay? Which I can understand, but if I can see somebody that's got, according to code, has got an illegal camping situation going on, and they can't coordinate with the sheriff's office, you know, why is it there's so many levels? I, I understand government, as far as needing those levels of checks and balances, but it just seems to be used, and, and, it just seems to be, be used as an excuse.
Okay, well, so trespassing is, it's a crime passed by the state, it's a misdemeanor, and like, you've already heard tonight, the code officers do not have jurisdiction to go in arrest for a crime, so what you're suggesting would essentially be passing a parallel ordinance, making it a county ordinance to trespass. And then the issue is, you can't do both, you can't go with the crime and the ordinance, it's a double jeopardy issue. So a county ordinance, it, it would not have nearly as much teeth, I mean, if you're, you know, concerned about judges throwing trespass out because they don't think it's important enough, the county ordinance violation's gonna go before those same judges, and it's got even less penalties by its very nature. I think Commissioner Starky wants to speak to that.
Well, I'm not an attorney, but some things just don't make sense, and, um, here's one of the things that I would, I've asked our staff, why this makes no sense, is that if, and, you know, my, our family was a private landowner, we have to sign a trespass agreement with sheriff's office, which, which now is in perpetuity, which is wonderful, to keep people from illegally living on our property. It should just be by right. Unless they have permission to live on your property, they shouldn't be there. And that, that to me is absolute common sense, but for some strange reason, the law doesn't work that way. It's not our law, and it's not our ordinance, I don't know, is it the Supreme Court? I don't know whose law that is, but we can't make that common sense thing work here right now. So, um, you know, we'll talk to our legislators and see if we can get something like that passed, but, right, we, you cannot kick someone off of someone's property unless they have the permission to kick them off, and it's backwards to me.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Hello? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, again, Alex Hall, Intergovernmental Affairs Office, for the Pasco Sheriff's Office. So there's actually a question that we have received numerous times, actually, when we first met with Deb and, and some of you folks, uh, we had gotten this question already. Um, so as it stands currently, in Major Correct, if I'm wrong, but with state law, uh, if someone is trespassing on your property, you always have the right to call, to, to tell them they are trespassing and need to leave, and the, the property owner is the one that is, that has that right to say, "You're trespassing on my property." Um, and then if they don't, then, then you can contact law enforcement to assist with that. Um, and then, but, the problem is when the property owner is not there. Go ahead.
So Alex is doing a great job. To, to reconceptualize this real quick, um, yeah, you, you don't need a trespass agreement with the sheriff's office to enforce rights on your own property, you need a trespass on the, uh, agreement with the sheriff's office to get us to enforce the rights on your property in your absence, right? Because the only thing that, it, it is true.
I have, just for example, I have a rental property, and a homeless man moved his bag into a rusted-out corrugated shed on the property, and I called the police, and I had to go to court and have them evict it off of the property, so.
Yeah. So I, how, how, how long did he live there? That's, so, I'll have to get the details, I mean, that, that, uh, that sounds ridiculous to pretty much everybody.
Of course.
So, yeah, I don't, uh, I don't, I don't know any of the details, it's the first time I've heard of that one, I can't speak to it directly, uh, but generally speaking, if, if you own the property and you don't want somebody there, then you can remove them, right? If you want us to come and remove them, then you have to say, "Hey, I own this property and I don't want them there," and then we will remove them. If you want us to go and remove them without you being there, then you just have to put it in writing that, "Hey, if, if I'm not here and the sheriff's office is, then they can remove them on my behalf." And so it's a pretty, it's a pretty simple, simple process, I don't know, should I take all trespassing? I know there's an order to things, I don't wanna disrupt the order.
No, I think we can just, we can move on to the, to keep the questions, keep them flowing, because we won't be able to answer in such great detail all the, you know, in the endos and other things that go along with each of the concerns that you have. So, uh, next is Lily Markie.
Well, as they were talking, they said about, um, not being able to trespass on somebody's, on the county property unless a crime has happened, even if there's a camp there. I heard that through that conversation, I may have missed something within that being said, but I'd like to address that as one, to let us know how that works, if they're actually putting a camp on county property, that they can't be removed. The other question I have...
Oh, it's a question, uh, something that you made, a comment that you made.
Yeah. In your presentation, um, about...
My other...
Say, for example, county property is a part of...
It was the attorney.
I don't know what you're talking about.
The other part I have is about having the homeless dumping from other areas, and you did briefly say that if they're not from our county, they can be put back to where they came from. Is that going to happen for us, since we're getting a large portion from outside of our county?
Yeah, I thought it was something that came up. So that's a great question. And I know we're getting caught up on ordinances and all of that kinda good thing, our role here is until we find a low barrier and have somebody run that low barrier, then the answer's gonna be no. If we find a building or find something that's gonna have a nonprofit run this, that is one of their jobs, as I mentioned with Catholic charities, that's what they do. But right now, unless the brigade or anybody else goes out there and does that, and they can identify, and they've got money to take them, um, put them, bring them back to whatever county they are, I'm sure a little bit of that is happening. But, so the answer is they are doing some of that right now, but I'm not sure how much they're doing it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Is that your question? All right, Bruce Markie, okay, just pass the mic over.
Good evening, thanks to county for, uh, taking this on. Through this whole process, I've been in a bunch of meetings and heard a lot of things that a lot of you unfortunately haven't, but hopefully you're getting a lot of that tonight. Um, I, I, I'm really glad you guys are, are taking this on, um, it's, it's super important, and a lot of people say that, "Well, the county taxpayers and things should not be paying for this type of thing." Believe me, you're paying for it anyway, like, in other services that, you're, you're paying for it, so this has to be done. My other point was gonna be about, Kathy, I think you guys have done some great work here in, uh, you know, coming up with some options, and I know a lot of that stuff kinda comes from looking at other counties and things like that. Um, I kinda implore you to look at a few other options, though, and talk to some, uh, you know, local contractors and things, because although the, you know, they call them pallet houses, but I think it's only 'cause they're delivered on a pallet, you know, they, they come from like Washington, I think. You know, between the shipping and the, uh, the thing, these little eight-by-eights are very expensive i- in my mind, um, they're 64 square feet, they're gonna house one or two people, and they're like $15,000. You know, I, I think you'd find a local contractor that's gonna use, um, local materials, local labor, and they're gonna build you a nice, uh, some beautiful little concrete buildings, and, you know, with some shared HVAC and things, I think you could find a, a much more cost-effective, uh, idea. That's me. Yeah, okay, yeah.
I think I have your contact information already, Bruce. Karen, please, Karen.
Thank you. The one thing you did not mention was the cost of each of your solutions, and that would be a decision-maker for a lot of us, because we're very money-conscious. But before you go to there, I wanna mention the fact that you need permanent supportive housing, thank you, Michael, for that phraseology, because we have a two-year waiting list for income-based housing. So until you resolve that, you can move these people all around you want, but we need more income-based housing for low-income people.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's no doubt, it's gonna come two and two, it's gotta come two and two, but not right now, we're hearing people that are complaining to our commissioners about hundreds of people in camps, there's no place to put them, we've gotta start, so just wanna leave them in camps, we can do that, that's what I'm asking you all, so that's why we need your advice on things. So what do these cost? The tents cost about $25,000? No, they spend $25,000, they spend $25,000 a year on tents because of the wear and tear of the, of the sun and all of that. The pallet homes, those particular pallet homes are $15,000, yes, they, $15,000 each, and they are hurricane-proof, up to 170 miles per wind, and they're all pre-electrical, got all of the AC and all that in there. So yes, can we do better? That's why I'm here. I'm not the expert in this, that's why it becomes a, a community, thank you, Bruce, for stepping up. That's why I'm here, folks, I'm not saying this is what the county's gonna do, these are some options, it's a starting point, now help us, help us come up with a solution, and that's what I'm here for.
I was just gonna quickly ask, do these shelters include treating these people throughout the year?
Thank you for asking that question. So in Pinellas Hope, they get three meals a day, and she gets all her meals donated at Pinellas Hope, three meals a day, from churches, nonprofits, other agencies. In Tampa Hope, she pays for one meal, I believe she gets it through Metro Ministry, she pays for one, and then the other two get donated. She's working on getting all three meals paid for by donations, so yes.
Got the answer?
So our next person is Dale Thompson.
I also wanna thank everybody for doing this tonight, it took us a while, but we're finally here. My main thing is, I know other people are gonna ask a lot of the questions that I have. My main problem is, when I first got involved in this months ago, I was just thinking about the people that are here from Pasco County. Now that I know that they're being bused in from other counties, I wanna know how we're going to try to figure out a way, I'm a firm believer in, if you can't take care of yourself, you don't take in others, take care of your area first and the people that live here. How are we gonna be able to find out, or did you already stop that from happening, the busing of the people coming in? I wanna find homes, I don't wanna just clean up Pasco County. I want these people to have a place to go, hopefully get straightened out, back on their feet, but I don't wanna be trying to do that for the people of Pasco County and sharing that money with people from other counties that are just coming here and overloading us when we've already got enough to take care of.
So I cannot answer that question, I'd have to defer to code, I do not know, I do not have specific facts showing people were bused here, I do not have that. I don't know if anybody else can, Don, anybody else can, do we have figures on that?
We do. Don, interesting, his colleagues are all...
Don, let me bring you a microphone.
During our pit count, uh, we found that over 80% of the folks were residents of Pasco County, and that's the recent count that, uh, Assistant County Administrator Pearson mentioned about... And that's the recent count that Assistant County Administrator Pearson mentioned about the 350 to 400 individuals. We don't... There is some anecdotal information out there suggesting things. We did have an issue with someone that was brought into the area because of, on a parole basis. It was just very strange and I think it had to do with the fact that they were a sex offender. But we don't have any information that would suggest that busloads are being dumped here. You'll find far more services to the south of us in Hillsboro and Penelope's County, as mentioned already by Kathy. So we just don't have that evidence.
So I disagree with what Mr. Anderson just said. I want to say it was four years ago, I went to a homeless coalition meeting. They weren't even checking to see if someone was from Pasco. They assumed that they were here for a while, that they're our responsibility, we should take care of them. I disagree with that. At the board meeting that year, we actually gave United Way 50 grand more to bus the people out. I don't know if many happened. Home. To where they're... Yeah, to where they're from. Bus them out to where they came from. Literally, I've heard stories of people being told from somewhere up in North Carolina, well, go down to Pasco County, here it's a good place to go. New York, New Jersey, they send them down, they pay for their year's worth of rent, then they're on their own. Down south, they've brought them up here. We know that, we've heard it. I've heard it from my own code people telling me that. So I'm not going to go with the number of 80%. I will tell you, they still don't even do the point-in-time count the way I wanted to get it done to find out where they're from, how long they've been here and all that stuff. So I will tell you, the coalition myself has let us down to find out what's going on exactly. So I don't accept that information just received.
What percent of Pasco, West Pasco versus East Pasco, the number of homeless that speaks for itself?
Two things I want to make sure that we talked about. One was actually an idea that the sheriff and Mike Fasano came to me on about, and it kind of goes back to the cost of cleanup. If someone has made a homeless camp on private property, we do make the private property owner clean it up, that our taxpayer. We don't. If we can't make them clean it up, then we clean it up and we lean them. The problem is, we don't get our money back when we lean them for a long time. So we are exploring putting that cost onto their tax bill. And I think that might get their attention. So we... The thing is, we don't know if that's legal or not, but the county administrator and I are working on that. The second thing is, and listen, I have a family member in South Florida who's homeless. So she has a mental illness. We have tried and tried and tried to help her. She's been to drug hab many times and until she wants to get her life back together, frankly, it's on her. But... So I don't want to seem that I'm not a compassionate person. But if you give people who are soliciting money, they're going to stay here and they're going to stay in that situation. We can't be given handouts. We need to be giving handups. And we have resources in this county. We have lots of job training programs and every single company I know is looking for people to work. So I think, you know, I think if we should be able to get people off the... Out of the woods who want to and into housing, into jobs. So don't, please don't give them money. Our office, the county has printed... Well, Senator Fasano's office printed these, but these are brochures that are being redone because some of the businesses in here no longer are working. But these are brochures that have all kinds of resources for anyone who is soliciting for money on the side of the street, for them to be able to call to get help. And so give them this instead of the money. And we can send you the PDF. You can print it out at home. We keep stacks of these in our office. We're out of them now. Like I said, we're redoing them. So please, do this. You really be helping them better if you give them the opportunity to get resources. And if they don't want resources and if they, you know, then we're going to have to have a harder hammer. But... And it's my hope, and I think the commissioners, that we have a place to send people. And it's not forever. And it's not a freebie. You're going to have to earn your right to be there and to move up and out of there and be a functioning member of society. And if you're not, then we're going to have other paths for them. But that's kind of the plan, I think, that we have here, so.
Like the Light, the Bead Light, the Grove Center, Holy Brown, any of those other places, do they have access to those or can we get?
We can get access to those brochures to all of those organizations. We give these out at all the HOA meetings that we go to and anyone who wants the PDF, we can email it to you and you can print it out yourself and keep them in your car.
And I have a stack of cards also for at least Commissioner Mariano. Maybe Katie can get some for Commissioner Starkey so we can even grab a card. You can email us so we can get the flyer out to you when it's done. Our next person is Patty Lewis.
All right.
I got a couple for you. The first thing is I want to know, because you all must have an idea, where are you thinking of putting these? I know you say you're going to purchase property, but somebody must have an idea. And I know we're out in Hudson and we're like the only little place that has no local government. And we don't want to be the dumping grounds because we already have most of the homeless. Our second thing, my next thing is, I've heard you say low barrier a couple of times. I'm not exactly sure what that is. If you could explain that a little better? Is that where you... I heard you mention something about you're not drug testing. So what is exactly low barrier? And if you have them and you do get these tent cities or whatever up and you're saying you're volunteering, you're getting volunteers to manage them and maintain them, are they going to drug test them when they're there? Are they going to make sure that they're not breaking the rules? And what do you do with them when they do break the rules? Or making a mess or trashing the place? Because nobody seems to be saying what happens to them after that. And then, when all else fails, what are you doing with the ones who don't want to leap the woods, that are still staying in our neighborhoods and trashing the place? I know that was a lot, but...
As far as the location, the location has not been determined yet. There's few locations that we're looking at, but it will be on the west side. That's all I can tell you right now. That's where the homeless are. That's where they are, folks. Then you know what? You've got a suggestion back there? Let us know what your suggestion is, okay? As far as low barrier, who can explain low barrier there? Okay, there it is. Low barrier. Flexible intake process. Simplify eligibility criteria. Rules narrowly focused on the safety and exit to homelessness. Realistic clear expectations and client-driven services focused on housing. That's what low barrier means.
What that means to me is you're going to keep them in Hudson, dump them on us, leave them there. Nobody's going to really check because there's no real rules. Lancelot. And you're going to just let them...
So did I just say... I think I said that if there's an organization such as Catholic charities that runs that, and I would love you all to come to visit some of these places and see how strict they are. It's not a free-for-all. Michael Raposa runs one. He... It's not a free-for-all.
If it's not a free-for-all, how about we put someone up on the burger cheese side and see how well everybody likes it?
I'll take this one. Because those of us in Holiday are going to disagree with you. And frankly, months ago, I was driving to a board meeting in Date City and I saw someone dragging a mattress down State Road 52 over towards the Saran Nova. So I just think we have it everywhere. But mostly concentrated on the 19th quarter right now. And I think the commissioners are in agreement that the... Okay, the problem is worse right now on the west side. So the solution has to be first on the west side. But more than likely, we'll be working our way across the county. Because we're not going to have a county commissioner say, also, not in my district. So we all have to work together and it's, you know, it's not a problem unique to Pasco County. And we put our foot out and say, we're not going to be Portland, we're not going to be LA. We say it all the time. But... And that's why we just have to start doing something. Because right now, all we do is run them around, kicking them out of one property and they just move to someone else's property and it's just a big circle. And so we have to start somewhere. That's kind of where we're feeling. We don't... No one said where we're going? It won't only be Hudson?
We're shipping them to those jails.
We're going to put them... But I think the... Okay, you cannot be yelling in our meeting. I think that one of the criteria or some of the criteria for locating a successful low-barrier shelter would be access to public transit and jobs close by. So we wouldn't put anyone out in the woods on a piece of property very far away and then have a problem. Because the idea is to help these people get to work, get jobs. And some of them are families who just missed a couple paychecks and now they're out on the street. I've run into some of them at Home Depot trying to buy a tent to move into Starkey Wilderness Park. And I said, oh, no. Gave them that flyer and we got them into a house. Family was able to save up some money and then they were back into their own apartment. So, you know, there's a whole mixture of the kind of people that have sadly had to move into the woods or their car.
If I could just add one more thing. They're here, folks. They're in your backyard right now. They're here. And we are here to try to find a solution. And so I hope you would keep an open mind that whatever location that we find and whatever organization runs it, they run it with strict rules. And so it's not just going to be, we're going to plop it in somewhere and then they're going to have all these folks, you know, running the streets. Down in Tampa Hope, they actually wear color wristbands. So when they're out and they get a complaint from somebody that's like, I got somebody loitering in my yard, if they have a teal wristband, they're automatically know it's their client and they need to get them back to where they need to be and get them where they need to go.
It's not provided.
What's that?
A group of people who are desperate, that's what I'm...
It helps with... What would you like us to do? I'm just telling you what they do. All right, let's keep our questions rolling because otherwise we're going to be here all evening. Our next person was Monica Sapp.
I have a statement and a question. At the beginning of the meeting, some of the officials up there stated that they are passionate about getting this under control. Well, if you're so passionate about it, why'd you let it get so bad? Okay? Second of all, my recommendation coming from a former local elected official out of another state would be you guys need to propose and adopt a trespass ordinance that's... And enforce it that sends to every property owner that has a home on a property or vacant lot, send it with their tax bill like you... Someone was talking about. Enforce it. Make them mandatory that they have to sign it. And that way law enforcement can enforce their... Do their job to remove it, remove them. And if the property owners... You guys said about charging the... Putting a lien on the property, about getting them to clean up the property. How about some of the charities who are giving all the clothes and that to the homeless people? And when they don't have a place to wash their clothes, they just dump them and then they go back and get more. So that's why a lot of the clothes and that are laying around. And then if the... If you have the trespass agreement in order and you guys can go around and get the people off the properties that they don't belong on and also fine the property owners once it's cleaned up if they don't maintain it. Where I came from, we had an ordinance. If you ain't cut your grass, you got fined. You got a warning, you got a written warning, and then you got fined. You know? And that's all there is to that. And then if you're talking about taking care of properties, you know, every... All county residents taking care of their properties? How come Pasco hasn't taken care of their own properties yet? Because you know what? There's two in my neighborhood that I live by that there was homeless people on and there is crap dumped all over it, garbage, that Pasco hasn't even taken care of their own properties.
You all want to address that or Sam?
Absolutely. Okay. You have a tweet.
So the proposal of essentially sending a trespass agreement to everyone in their tax bill, I mean, it's something that can be talked about and can be looked at. I think there's a lot of inherent problems with that. For example, the sheriff's office or code or whoever's enforcing it is not going to know who's allowed to be there and who's not, just with a blanking order for every property in the county. You know, what happens when it's the handyman or the cousin or something that is there without your permission, but you can't be reached to tell them that? So it, you know, it's... It's something we can look at, but at the end of the day, it's really, it's incumbent on the property owners that if they don't want someone there, they need to let us know, they need to let law enforcement know. We can't really do that for them. You know, it becomes a problem... Commissioner Starkey was talking about kind of a legal issue. It becomes a problem when they are prosecuted for trespass. If you don't have a homeowner that's going to be... Or a landowner that's willing to come in and say, that person didn't have permission to be on my property, that case can't be proven and will be thrown out. Because all the accused has to do is get up, you know, they exercise their right to trial and say, yeah, I had permission to be there, prove otherwise. And it can't unless you have the cooperation of that property owner.
The property owner signed a trespass agreement mandatory by the county of Pasco County. And if someone's on my neighbor's property, who he is, kind of like a vacant property, if I call and say someone built a tent there, all you guys have to do is look up the property and see if you have a trespass agreement. And if they do, you can go out and get them.
And we've... I mean, there's been a lot of efforts to make the public aware.
I get what you're saying and I wish we could make people do things, but I would need 500 more code enforcement officers and 500 more deputies to go to every single property and force them to sign something. But it... So it sounds really good, but the reality is, I don't want to tax you that much because that would cost all of us a lot of money. So give us a chance. Let us try our first attempt and let's see, let's see what that looks like. My own thoughts and like, I don't know how, we haven't worked this, shopped this, you know, all the way to the end. But I don't want to... I would not want to see some giant place. I would rather have a variety of smaller, manageable ones strategically placed around the county. Because something that I don't want to see is people loitering around that area in the daytime. You know, you don't want it to become a problem for the neighborhood. So they have to be a size that is manageable and responsible and that's just my own view, Kathy. So I don't know if we've gotten to that discussion yet, but, okay. Janet Hogan.
Everybody here is like, I've been to all these community meetings in the past year and Alex has told each of us who's passed here, that you can go online and put a trespass agreement on your property that is, it just stays on there, period. You say, who can be there and who can't? Anybody who's been to the meeting, how many people went on the computer and put in the trespass agreement Alex told us to? Rachel Ham, she's on our property. Well, I put a trespass agreement so people can... You're going to be on vacation and someone can live into your house.
Yeah, we... Can we have Sheriff's Officer address that in a little bit about... Not right now. Not right now, Sheriff Alex, but outside the trespass agreement, your vacation notification that you do, maybe address that in just a few minutes? But let us keep moving. All right, Ms. Hogan, Janet Hogan?
I commend all the comments and all the work that's being done. I guess, you know, what we've talked about is housing for those who are willing to go to those, those housing developments, whatever they may be. I think we can all agree that that's not where the problem is. The problem is with the people who don't want to go to those places. And that's what we're talking about. You know, we don't... You know, the lady here who commented on that's identifying them. Well, they have to be identified somehow. That just isn't, you know, it just has to be. But our concern is those people that don't want to go to these places. But our concern is those people that don't want to go to these places. That's where all of these comments are coming from. What do we do with those people who are trespassing? What do we do with those? And, you know, the no trespassing agreement is obviously the place to start for anyone who owns their individual properties. We live in a mobile home park that's owned by a corporation. We have, they, and the owner does have that trespassing agreement. And so, we do call. But we have adjacent property owned by a physician and that's where all the homeless encampments are. And then, behind our property, as Jack knows, he's been out to see. And so, those, therein lies the problem. And I don't see that problem being solved and how do we address that? Do we have a, other than do the trespassing agreement? I guess those are my questions. So, and the other ones have all pretty much been answered. So, thank you.
This is a question for the county attorney's office. So, when a trespass agreement doesn't work, there are other options for code enforcement. There are code permitted use violations. So, when somebody is staying on a property that they're not entitled to because it's not zoned in that manner, code can go out and cite them. So, if it's a commercial property and they are living in a tent, that's a permitted use violation. So, they do get cited. You can also cite the property owner because they're allowing somebody to stay on their property and it's not properly zoned for that use.
So, we had a property, those who live in the Holiday kinda area, we had a property behind, is it Walgreens or CVS at Trouble Creek in 19? I drive that way home all the time. And the Bank of America, there was a homeless camp just behind there in a little strip in the woods. And we, we sent the property owner, noticed that there was a problem and he ignored it and ignored it. So then, code drove down to his house in Pinellas County and they served him a notice that he was operating a campground without permission. And we got his attention. It was like $500 a day or something. So, he quickly cleaned that up and, um, and last time I looked, there was one guy back on there. And I've, I told him, I think it'd probably be easier and cheaper for you to just fence it. But, so that is one tool that we use to clean up a property. We had the property owner clean it up, but, you know, they might be back again. So that's one of their tools.
Alright, Ellen Miracotta. Is Ellen still, oh, sorry. I didn't look all the way to the back, I apologize.
Why is he going there? That money, we buy somebody like that, by the way, we don't get a piece of money. If we don't get a piece of money, that, that money goes to Tallahassee.
Yeah, and it goes into a pot that helps run the state court system. But yeah, so we don't get to keep our code enforcement violation money.
Ellen, go ahead with your question.
Okay.
Can we, please, thank you.
I've asked several times what the percentage of homeless people in our communities, especially in Holiday, are mentally ill. I was told 9%. I also know that the sheriff has to house these people over and over and over again. What they do is they, as we've been told, they, they'll commit a low-level crime, get themselves in jail, where they get three squares and a shower and they stay for a couple of days and then they just, the recidivism is over and over and over again. I know it became unpopular to have hospitalization of mentally ill people somewhere in the 50s and 60s and little by little, they were closed. Well, it started, yes, right. So, has the county considered in any way to establish some facilities for mentally ill people on a long-term basis where they can get treated, where they can get three squares and a shower and a bed and be taken care of? If you're concerned about abuse, which there was, then by all means, put in cameras or put in something in so that you can monitor that. But something, but a great deal of the people that I encounter seem to have a problem. They're not, I don't wanna say normal, but they're not. And, and they need help and they're not, they're simply not getting it. And I don't think that a tent city would help them.
John, is that something that you have any data on with the coalition?
Michael, do you have anything?
So, with regard to the mental illness, that, that's a really common perception, but less than 50% of our caseload has a documented mental illness. But, but it's not, but it's not, it's, that's including all that, that's, but that's not the 100% that everybody thinks that everybody out there is suffering from a mental. It's, it's less than 50%.
So, excuse me, if I may, so...
What Michael, what he is saying is, mental health is not the reason. Anybody here could be homeless tomorrow.
It's a good...
Mental health is not the reason, is not the aim. And I'm not saying it shouldn't be a problem, but I'm telling you, it's not widespread. It is, it is not the reason of homelessness.
Thank you, that's a very good point, Paul.
So, if I may add a little bit about that, so some of you may have heard that there was a large federal settlement for opioid manufacturers and distributors that caused a tremendous amount of negative impact all across our communities, right? Particularly in Pasco County. So, the opioid task force has received some funding that we hope to open up for application this summer for different nonprofits and community partners so that they can start assisting our community in a variety of ways to address the mental health issues that cause oftentimes substance use disorder, right? So, it's not a one solution, it's a multi-pronged solution. So, just be on the lookout for that. If you want to speak more about that topic, I'd be happy to share more information with you about it. But there is some funding that will be coming in. The other thing I can tell you is that there is a definite interest in our community to address mental health. We know that it is hard to come by and it is difficult to access, right? So, we are looking for solutions to address that. So, again, if you wanna learn more about what is coming and what will be happening, when those presentations come before us, come, please participate. If you're part of a nonprofit or an organization that dedicates your jobs to assisting people with mental health solutions or substance use disorder treatment, mitigation, and prevention, please apply for funding this summer. So, I wanna also kind of piggyback on, piggyback on that a little bit and something that we're doing at the Florida Association of Counties and Jack and I are very involved in the National Association of Counties. In the Social Security Act in the 1960s, when that was passed, I believe there was a little mistake. And now, and this is for the whole country, if someone gets arrested and they're held in a county jail, they lose all their federal benefits. They lose their Medicare, they lose their Medicaid. Some states are suspension state and some states are cancellation state. Florida is a cancellation state. So, you have mental illness, you get arrested, you go to jail, you can spend a year there, you can spend six weeks there, but you lose your benefits. You get out and you're not on the medicine you're supposed to be on to keep you out of trouble. And, and so then, the recidivism rate is very high. And so, and I will tell you, that, so the county, we pick up the health bill for our jail population. So, we are working with Senator Rubio and others to change this so that it's not a county responsibility and that the people who are on Medicare and Medicaid can continue to have that system pay for their medicine while they're in jail and when they get out of jail, and they don't get off it and they don't get themselves in trouble and we have to just keep paying more and more and more. So, that's, so we do have the attention of people in Washington and we are hopeful that maybe they can, it's just a matter, Senator Rubio said, changing one word in that law. For, and I don't remember what that word was and he's an attorney and I should've written it down. But I'm hopeful that that will help us too with our, you know, with the circle of homelessness with some of the people that do have a mental illness.
Alright, so the next one on this, I have Ellen Turbas, or Commissioner Mariano wanted...
Yeah, just to touch on that. You know, when I first was elected, we put in with Bob Dillinger, $195,000 for jail diversion to keep people out of the jail. We're trying to work it that way, even with the future, with the new jail being built, we can actually get these people so they go out. We don't want people going down to the emergency room, running up big bills that we gotta pay for. They have the benefits in place, we can deal with it better. So, it is gonna be something that, to look at. As far as the opioid task force, I will tell you, when I first looked at that, I thought the settlement money should just come to us, let us pick how to go do it. The things they put in place can deal with mental, I mean opioid abuse, it can deal with a lot of different things. You can become homeless because, let's say, your dad got hooked on drugs, you're homeless. Money can be used for that. Counseling for someone getting hooked on drugs. We work with hospice on that. They actually do something for bereavement, but they also do that for, for people. So, there's gonna be a lot of other things to look at with that opioid money and this could be a way to go forward. It could be the way to pay for a building if we go forward to try to deal with this. Those homeless people, you know, whether it's 10%, 20%, whatever that number is, should be addressed and it hasn't been by the federal government for years. They dumped it back in the 80s. So, it is something that's coming and getting worse and worse and I think it deals with a lot of this. I think you all saw when, years ago, we looked at it, trying to compare ourselves to like, "No, let's go do what San Francisco was doing." I didn't wanna do that, right? Didn't wanna do that, thought it was a bad idea and it got worse and worse and worse for what they did. But one of the things they did do that was the most successful was they busted people back from where they came from. That's gonna be a very key part of what we do to solve this thing. I do wanna take care of ours, I do wanna take care of those people that did get hooked on drugs. So, that may take an address when coming up, so keep that in mind, we may use that opioid money for that, that's one of the things that's on the table. And we're gonna look for the civic groups. I've got a lady down in Holiday that wants to help out with the church, another group that's up in Shady Hills that wants to help out and they wanna try to deal with. So, if we can work with these people to go, and I tell you, there's training out there for everybody. I mean, let's face it, we all know we go into a restaurant, they can't seat you right away because they don't have the staff to run the restaurant, right? There's jobs out there. We wanna create opportunities for people so they can get up on their feet, get themselves back in the stands. So, it is gonna be something, but this type of meeting, this type of things, these type of ideas coming out is, is what's gonna help us decide where to go for direction.
I just wanted to mention something, somebody had said that being in a tent city, they didn't think they were gonna get the help they needed for mental health. I can tell you, Michael Reposa and Catholic Charities and a lot of these organizations, they case manage. They actually get the services for them, they help them with their mental health. And so, please, I, when we say they're living in a tent city, they're not gonna get the help, they are gonna get the help. They're not getting the help in the woods that they're in right now. And I think that's the point we're trying to say, is they're not getting the help there. So, let's get something where they can get help. And I do wanna mention the trespassing, 'cause I have this conversation with Alex and Chase all the time. And they'll say, you know, "If we arrest somebody, okay, we arrest them, Kathy, okay, we bring them to your jail and then they're gonna be out and they're gonna be back in the woods within, what, 48, 72 hours?" So, what are we, what are we proving there? So, by having somewhere that's gonna help them get the services they need is better than nothing. And that's all I wanted to say. Alright, Ellen Turbas?
About an hour before this meeting, my neighbors called me to tell me that...
Put it in your mouth.
Oh, about an hour before this meeting, my neighbors called me to tell me that Timber Oaks, which is 80% senior community, 20% family community, was one of the sites that they were considering for a homeless encampment. That's why... No, that is not true. No, no, I don't know where, I don't know where they found it, but I was concerned because there's, the county, the county bought the golf course several years ago and turned it into a watershed area. And that's the only area in Timber Oaks that they're talking about, but I have no idea. So, you don't have any designated areas?
No.
Okay. Not in that area, no ma'am. There is nothing of that sort.
So, you wouldn't be placing people in any 55 community?
No. Be aware of the rumors, 'cause I follow a lot of the community Facebook pages and also Nextdoor and even OnWing. And there's rumors that always crop up and when you hear something about it, it's in your backyard, that's one of the things that, as I've worked with Kathy and her team and been onsite visits with them, that's not gonna happen. We're not gonna put it right in your backyard, we're looking for the right location for it and you would know about it before it happened. So, the Reverend Ken Tabor? Tabor is my son's first name, by the way.
How did that happen? That's wonderful. Okay, our church is on the 19th quarter and we're very positive about the homeless that come in to ask for help. At the same time, we're making application for the senior citizens meals as a location for them. And I haven't heard anything here about how the food for the homeless would be integrated, possibly, with that particular program. That's my question. And then, secondly, we just got down here from, well, we've been here about eight years, but we're up in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I would suggest you investigate Heartside Ministries and what they've done for homeless in Grand Rapids. You know, go look and see what that is, it's fantastic. So, is the homeless eligible for the senior citizens program?
I have Brian Hoben here from Community Services and he will be able to address that with you now, or you wanna wait till after the meeting? He'll get with you on the side on that. Alright, the next person on the list is Lynn Picard.
We at First Baptist Church have been working with the homeless for almost 10 years and I would curious to see if there are any homeless people here. Is anyone here that's homeless? I thought not. But you ought, you ought to have answers for them and you don't seem to have a place for them to go. I had a lot of complaints tonight, but there's no real place for them to go. And you're proposing a place for them to go, which is great. We serve on Mondays, 130 sandwiches to homeless hurting people. And any one of you could be a homeless person. Only by the grace of God, you weren't, aren't a homeless person. And I understand it's a problem, but we're not coming up with any solutions, just complaints. We need a place for them. We need a place when we talk to them on the street to send them where there's a safe place so they're not stealing from each other. They can, they're not stealing from you. They're not taking away your properties. There has to be a solution for them and this complaining isn't a solution. So, I would ask that we at least try to look at this and try to find a good proven solution where the police can monitor them, where the churches can help them, where other services can help them. And let's get off this complaint and start, and start thinking about them.
He's gone already. Karen Garten?
Not just for the name, I know I'm gonna get booed. I don't want them here anymore. I have lived here 35 years, we had five generations, and my two daughters, in the last two years, moved out of county because it is this bad. We don't mind paying our taxes and I know a lot of people, I moved into two senior communities, worked their entire life to live in a home, that their rights are being infringed upon. I lived in Manhattan, I grew up in the city. When I moved here, I can tell you, you are creating slums. Where you make it easier for them to reside, they will come to. People will send them here, they will, you wanna give them housing? You know Pasco, you can live by the water, you can live in their homes, you can do whatever you want because we are making it easy. I am not uncharitable. I was raised in a Roman Catholic household, I went to Catholic school. My house is very, very religious. The charity begins at home. I had children that today, when we were talking about this meeting, my oldest son said, "I didn't wanna tell you, but I moved out at 18 because I knew how much you struggled." didn't want to tell you, but I moved out at 18 because I knew how much you struggled. We worked hard, I was on the verge of being homeless. I didn't ask to become disabled, but I worked every day. I qualify for nothing. I don't qualify for food stamps. I do buy, I do have my social security because it's a low amount, I do get supplemental Medicaid. My home is older, and I live in a mobile home, so I do not qualify to have help with my roof or any repairs. I live alone. I had my house broken into by one of these homeless people, and when I called for the police to come, they didn't even go two houses down where they went into. Now, I do agree with something that Ms. Starkey had brought up in, two years ago, a meeting, as far as the commercial properties or vacant properties. I do believe that the homeowners do, or the property owners, do need to be fined like an average, everyday person who owns a home, by a daily basis, once the infraction has been pointed out, because they do move, if they're going to get fined $500 a day, they move. I wrote a list here, and it seems like it's going to be redundant, but county parks, we can't get them to leave the parks? Well, I see it's seven to seven. If they're there past seven o'clock, they're not supposed to be there, they should get a ticket. And that goes for my son, who, when he was a teenager, I got a call that he was where he wasn't supposed to be, I got a fine. That, you know, if I go across 19 wrong and jaywalking, I'll be darned, I'll be the one getting a ticket. But I am not safe to walk in my own neighborhood. My neighborhood, when I moved in, was elderly people and seasonal people from, like, Wisconsin. Nowadays, it's more homeless, walking, squatters, and the situation that we're seeing now is that you're making it too easy. It's not that I'm not empathetic, but we need to make it in the other side of the county, because like it was said here, that they need places that have more accessibility for transportation, for jobs. All the money that they're pouring into Wesley Chapel in the Moffitt complex, that's where the jobs are, that's where everything's going to be, put it on that county. I don't see any other commissioners. Our commissioners for our side, I know it's called the Sports Coast, but I'm still part of the Nature Coast, I want my little section back, and it's not going to happen. Just south of 52? I used to live in Beacon Woods, now I'm actually Johnson Heights, which Gulf Highlands.
All right, the next person to speak is Tori Bogmenko.
Good job.
I must have said it right.
I really only put my name on their list so that I could hear someone mispronounce my name. But anyway, I wanted to, what wasn't addressed was, okay, we don't know where these places are going to be, how about, what would the stipulations be? Will they be near a school, near a library, near a subdivision?
Kathy, are there questions you can address?
Just from the, from the experts that I have worked with in the past year, no, they're not near schools, no, there is transportation, they do need transportation, and it's near jobs, and they're not in neighborhoods. So that's basically what we're looking at right now, is those kinds of criteria.
The other criteria, the other thing, okay.
I heard, somebody was saying something about building a new jail, what about the jail that's right here? I heard that that wasn't being used at all.
That would be an Andrew Baxter question, who's not here, but--
I can answer a little bit of that, because we looked at that when we were looking to do shelters and all of that, we've had, you know, the commissioners out there, the amount of money that it would take to renovate that was just astronomical, and then the whole layout is just not a very good layout. So I think they're going to use it for parking in the future, knock it down, so it just wasn't feasible.
If they're going to knock it down, would that be a perfect place to put the pallet houses?
Michael Reposa?
My name's Michael, and I'm an alcoholic. Oh, this isn't that meeting. So they would normally say hi, Michael, to me when I'm-- Although I feel like I'm in one of those meetings sometimes, listening to some of the stuff. I'm the CEO with St. Vincent de Paul Cares, and we've got quite a bit of property up here now, and I'm grateful to be here tonight. I want to tell you that on July 1st of 2020, I said to my staff, within nine months, I'm going to be at a community meeting in Pasco County, and the citizens are going to be uproared because there's going to have been a huge spike in homelessness. And I can tell you why, and I also have the solution. I'm rolling, ready? Since the beginning of the pandemic, SPDB Cares has moved 3,119 households into permanent housing from homelessness across our area. Here in Pasco, that's 318 in an average of 96 days, 170 of them were veterans as they had a household, and 148 were civilians as they had a household. Here in Pasco, we've sheltered 274 people using the scattered site shelter model that was in your backyard and you didn't even know it, surprise! 177 of those veterans of the 274 were housed, that's 69% got moved into permanent housing. Civilians, we sheltered 237, there's 109 that were housed, that's only 46%, and a lot of that had to do with the timing of the funding, that we couldn't get them housed fast enough. Today, our organization has an open caseload of 104 homeless households, 103 of those are veterans. One is a civilian household as they had a household. Post-pandemic, when the money ran out, we're left with just serving veterans up here in Pasco County. And the solution is housing. It is the only solution. It is the only, 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 only solution. You can move them north, you can move them south, you can't move them west, you're lucky you've got the water there, but you could drown them, not recommended, it's a crime, they'd arrest you, right? But the only solution is housing, and it's rapid access to affordable housing. And even in a marketplace that where the moratorium nearly stalled things, now it's moving, and the prices are starting to come down, and the affordability is getting better, not where it was, but it's better. It's kind of like gas prices, they go up, and then they go up 50 cents, and it takes five years to get the 50 cents back. You know, the bottom line is that there's three approaches to attack this. The first approach is out of sight, out of mind, and I'm sure all of you would applaud that and think that that's a fabulous idea, send them somewhere else. Guess what? They're going to come back, because guess what, the majority of them have a tie to your community. You probably don't want to believe it, but we've been asking that question since 2015 with every case that we've opened up here. And 80% of those people live here. They went to elementary school here, they went to high school here in Pasco County. These are our people. These are our people. The second approach is housing readiness, where people get put into a place and stored away to get ready to be housed. That is precisely the model that Catholic charities uses, and I do not support that model. Because our organization believes that a person is ready to be housed the minute they walk through that front door. There is no preparation. We house drunks, we house alcoholics, we house people with no money, we house the batshit crazy, we house anyone and everyone, the hookers, the whole nine yards. And we house them successfully at a rate of about 87%. And that is housing first, and that is what you, as a community, should be demanding, is housing first. A shelter alone will not work. It will not work. There was a time in our world's history during the Second World War where they put a whole population of people in one area that they did not want, and they were called concentration camps. And if you put a homeless person in a shelter with no solution, you're building a concentration camp. And I'm not afraid to stand in front of a person and say it. I'm not afraid to say it. Some of the other stuff that you've spoken about, diversion services, diversion is the ability to relocate, you do not need a shelter to relocate. And for a very, very small amount of money, your outreach folks could be equipped with the ability to move them away. You're going to be shocked at how few leave, because they belong here. The bottom line is this, the bottom line is this, you have to get back to developing your system. And we made huge strides, we made huge strides with the homeless coalition, we made huge strides with the county, we made huge signs with Sheriff Naco and the Sheriff's Department, we've made huge strides. And the funding dried up because the ESG money from the feds stopped, you've got to restore that money before you build anything, or else you're going to have a block. You need outreach, you need diversion, shelter and prevention services, you need rapid rehousing services, and then you need access to permanent housing. Again, that is your solution. And my final question to you is this, because there's a lot of nimbie, who would volunteer to put this shelter that they're talking about in their neighborhood? Nobody, because the bottom line is, nobody wants it. And that is the same thing we go through in every community where we work, no one wants it in their backyard. The object of the game, and we run a shelter in the heart of downtown St. Petersburg, and I'm going to tell you, no one knows it's there, because we run it effectively in efficiency. And I'll just close with this, I really beg the county to check the NHMS, the discharges to permanent housing that the organization you referenced is telling you, because it's closer to 10%. NHMS, they're not discharging to permanent housing, they're discharging to the street.
So Michael, I have a question for you on that, so this would be a very good question. These folks want a solution now, so how long does that take to get the person out of the camp to the house?
How quickly can we sign a contract?
A contract with what? Where are they going to go? That's my question to you.
We could go back to the model of those, and then again, you do have a piece of your population that, let's face it, that they don't want it yet, but you have a large piece of the population that do want it, and that's the folks that we worked with, with the coalition throughout, we cleared the deck of over 300. So the numbers went down, and your visibility went way down. When we stopped, guess what? It creeped right back up.
But where do they go now? You know, the answer to my question. So if we were to take a couple of people out of the camps tomorrow, where would they go?
You've got to put services in place first, Kathy, and you've got to put--
What services?
So what we had proposed, our organization had proposed, which worked good once we got it rolling, was a combination between the seehouse services, which is using the scattered site motels, short term, and then moving them into permanent housing with a subsidy attached to it. And it got those numbers down. We, I'm just telling you, that that is the fastest way. Your sheriff cannot arrest his way out of this, your code enforcement cannot code their way out of this, and your community builders, including us, who's one of your largest affordable housing developers in your community. It would be two years if we started to build housing right now. You can't get out of it fast enough, you're fast enough is going to have to be isolated services. I am telling you, and I was deliberate, that we had 5, 610 people in shelter in your backyard, ladies and gentlemen, you didn't even know it. No, you didn't know, because--
I have pictures of homes--
No, 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 we had them in hotel motel shelters. So--
I'm from Roma, somebody that was, had a factor, they put it, at the Belmont Hotel. That's where they came from.
Okay.
Now, you're spitting this under, but you know what you're saying, and this is a grand law. I watched my first meeting with the commissioners, when they had representatives from the coalition for homeless in Pasco County, asked for additional funding on which they were already getting money for COVID cases. It came out to $4.7 million with all the money for that particular year. And they said, the nine hundred, we're going to have all these people, it was 297 households that were going to be placed into housing. You're saying by now, the numbers that we were just given, it went up over 33% in two years.
Because homeless--
They took them, put them on the streets for three months, and put them in a house. You want to see them go home, just like--
So, we, well, we-- So the intervention works, and I'm not going to get into, it does, and, and I'm, no, that's not-- That's not how any of that works. That's not, ma'am, that's just not how any of that works, you know?
All right, we need to keep moving because some people are still waiting to speak. We have David Kimmel.
What is the success rate on these proposals?
I'm not the person to ask that question to, so as far as the information--
No, long term, what is the statistics of what the success rate for--
You went? The hopeless 30% and the 48%.
I'm David Kimmel, and I've lived in Pasco County and worked in Pasco County for over 30 years, and I love this county. And one of the reasons I love this county is, you know, we have a problem, you guys are all here, and I don't see anybody jumping up and down and screaming from the top of their lungs and cussing and being rude. We're just a really good community, and we have a problem, and we have to deal with it. And, I mean, someone said that we're complaining, but the reality is, if you have a problem, people have to complain, get it out, so we can find a solution. Now, some of it is going to be a little hard for us to swallow, because it's going to be a hard decision to take. And one of the reasons I'm here is, there was a rumor it was going to be at the, the center was going to be about the VA in my backyard on 52. So there's all these rumors going around. So one of the things I'm going to say is, and I think everybody feels the same way about that, is we all want to know where these sites are going to be proposed, because one of the things that you have to realize is, the homeless situation is multifaceted. I mean, it's not like everybody's a drunk, and everybody's an alcoholic, and everybody's crazy. There are a lot of people that are homeless because they had no choice, it happened to them. And you can't handle them all in the same way, they have to be divided, and they can be in different areas. It's totally different than having one community have an area of people that are homeless because they lost their jobs, and then it's another, they have a community that's a low-barrier community that's in other communities, that are just a nice, small, little community, and people won't like that. So you have to be careful where you put those. And you also have to realize that there are some people, and my brother works in Hillsborough, and he helps place people routinely, it's his job every day, and I've had these conversations with him, and there are people that don't want to be in these centers because they can't follow the rules for one reason or another. And I know we say mental illness is not an issue, but a high percent of those people that won't, don't want to go in these communities do have a mental issue, and that's going to be a separate issue to deal with completely. But all we're doing is passing it on, and by putting these people in jail, it makes it hard on the police officers, because they know they're just going to get turned around and put out. It doesn't solve the problem. It's me taking a homeless person from my backyard and putting it in my neighbor's backyard. It doesn't work. So we have to do something as a community, and I think this is a really good first step, but it's going to be a hard road to go, okay? And we all have to keep talking about it. And if things are going to go in areas that we don't want them, we need to let everybody know, we need to let the commissioners know in a civil matter, like, you know what, this really doesn't work, because you just put that right near a bus stop, okay? And there are certain rules and regulations about where some of these people that happen to have issues that are homeless, because a lot of them, because it really got to me when you were talking about people coming out of jail that had a mental issue, went in, and they come out and lose their meds, because my brother's talked to me many times about guys that go into jail because they lost their meds, and they do small petty crimes so they can go back to jail to get their meds. So it's a tough-- They don't, they don't. All right.
Thank you. Richard Egler? From Timber Oaks.
Thank you very much. I kind of got a chat out from him. The county commissioners know me, I've worked on projects, there's two of them before. I'm from Timber Oaks, I'm a retired attorney, CPA, Lieutenant Colonel inventory, but I'm now, I've been on Timber Oaks, and as I have some of my people here. I, I've been president twice, vice president twice, and I'm now currently a director treasurer. Young lady who left is the one who was knocking on my door at quarter after five tonight and said, they're going to put stuff here in Timber Oaks. So my one sentence to you commissioners, and then I'll get on to something else here a little bit, is, we're a senior citizen, we have over 2,000 homes, no, but I figured that, remember, we did get shot down?
The rumor came from Home Solutions--
Okay, we know it's a rumor, let's just move on. Let's just move on. I have a few other things I want to talk about. Okay, well, it's my, it's my three minutes. All right. Thank you. I like, I like the, it was hard to follow the alcoholic guy. He's got a lot of good ideas. Those are the most ideas I've heard. I'm not saying I approve of all of them, but like that. You guys got a real tough job for you. And Timber Oaks, look for talent in there. Because maybe we can help you even though, you know. And maybe, you know, you can have placement of two or three in there, two or three there. You know, spread it out like that. That's, that's an idea. When I saw a tent city up there, I said, "No way." You know? When you're talking, when you're pulling these people out of the woods. I'm a little inventory guy. I would like to stay in the woods, damn it. And probably some of these do too. So, we need to get a variety here a little bit. And if they could have, you know, the right type of facilities, which I know you got to develop. I don't even have a warning yet, do I? But, you know, this is a big-eyed, eyed project. There's got to be a lot of individual solutions. I, I was the chief public defender for a county for a while, besides being solicitor for a couple of boroughs and rural townships in Pennsylvania. And there's no single solution. But you've got to let the people work with it. Find out through ideas like this that came out. And this young lady over here had some great ideas too. And there's my warning. And, you know, let's get together. Let's back the county commissioners. Let's find out what's going on and keep at it. Thank you very much.
All right. This, this is going to be the first hard one that I've come across. Shuvda? Bet, bet, betels? This is one that's hard to read. It looks like S-H-U-V-D-A. Shuvda? Sign up on the second page. She may have gone. Laura Everell? Also must have gone. Dave, Dave Teller?
Yeah. You said earlier about these laws. Why can't we change the laws? Why can't we go to, to the governor and ask him to change some of these laws? So, the laws would be better for... And then you were saying earlier, I'm talking, I can't remember your name, but I'm sorry. But you said something about the money that we get for these. Why isn't that staying here in Pasco County? Why is it going to the Tallahassee? Why, why isn't that staying here and help this, help the people that are here that need help? These people need help. Why aren't we helping them by, by the money we're, when you're raising and you're sending it to Tallahassee? It should stay here. It shouldn't go to another. It shouldn't go there. It should stay here.
In a way, we do get that money back. Because Pasco County has two courts. And that money goes into a pool that helps fund the operation of our two courts back here. So, it's, the, the way we could keep that money here is if we went to a magistrate system. And see, my, our attorneys think it's a really bad idea. So, I will tell you, we're probably getting that money back here. We don't control it. But we're getting a lion's share of that pool because of our two court system here in the county. The other thing, what was your other question?
The other question was...
The first one. Oh, change in the law.
Change in the laws.
Well, some of these may be stayed. But some of these may be in your U.S. Constitution. For example, and did the guy from, did, did Dave from the 12-step program leave? Okay. Mike, Mike. Because if, if those who are in the holiday area, and someone here is going to know their name, the couple that was moving down the sidewalk, started out with the two carts and next thing you know, they had like 10 each. What, what are their names? Because apparently you guys all know... It's too, it's a man and a woman. A Kim and John. I mean, it's crazy when we, we know it. And so, if they're on the sidewalk, we can't evict someone from a sidewalk, right? No, no. Do you remember when Mr. Santa Claus or whatever his name was lived on mile stretch on the mattress? And then he invited another couple to live with him on the mattress? Yeah. We cannot evict him from his mattress on the sidewalk in front of the tire shop. He sadly passed away and now they don't live on the sidewalk. So, there, there are some things that are in the U.S. Constitution that, that maybe we... I've seen an attorney standing here. Am I get... I'm not an attorney, so I may have said, everything I said might be wrong.
Can we get with the senator, the senators and the, why can't they get? Hold on a minute. Why can't we get with the senators and, and then, I mean, we're paying our, we're taxpayers. Why shouldn't, these laws shouldn't be changed? Well, it's like squatting. We had a squatter in Timber Oaks. That was, how many years? I don't know, four or five, six years? And, and it took them a long time to get them out. And that's because it was a bank repo. And that's why they couldn't get them out. There's going to be, some of these laws need to be changed. And that's what we pay councilmen and senators to do, to change laws.
I agree. And I think there's some will be bringing to their attention to see if that's something that's a state law or federal law. She may know more about that, what, maybe not, of what we can do. So...
I just want to piggyback on what Commissioner Starkey said about going to a magistrate and addressing why the money goes to Tallahassee. And it's the opinion of the county attorney that the reason why we don't go to a magistrate is, is because there isn't any teeth. In other words, when we go through the court system and we actually go in front of these county court judges, that if the person who's in violation doesn't come into compliance, we can seek compliance orders and a contempt order from a judge. So, a magistrate is a lower level. And what happens is, is that it doesn't necessarily, they just get a lien or they get a fine that's recorded in the public record. It doesn't have any teeth. If they don't come into compliance, we then have to go to the circuit court anyway to get the judge to make them and force them into compliance. So, going straight to the court is how we handle county ordinance violations. They get a compliance order. And if they are in contempt, the judge will hold them in contempt. So, it's, it's less of work. But because we're going through the court system, whatever fines are collected on those, go directly to Tallahassee to fund that. All right, Sedica Howard?
Thank you. Can you guys go back to your slide that's before this, please? And while they're doing that, do one more. The one where you guys had the housing options for 15,000? Yes, ma'am, that one right there. Thank you so much. A loan is best carried when it is carried with balance. So, there was a problem where they were talking about where these particular options should be in Pasco County. I do believe that, I love Pasco County. I'm a Florida boy. I grew up here in Florida all my life. I spent my whole life here in Florida. I love it. I'm here from Tampa. My beautiful wife here. Because Tampa got busy. And one of the things that I loved about Pasco County is it had the home element that I remembered Tampa having at one point in time. It was a community filled. Everybody was loving. Everybody was kind. Everybody wasn't kind of snappy and mean. And I love that about Pasco County. I met a gentleman by the name of Mr. Nicky, who was a veteran. He has been a resident of Pasco County his entire life. His parents has lived here. He's a homeless fat. But when people see him, they might just think that he's just a homeless person. This man served our country. He did things that we in this room did not do. And if he is not worthy of such a unit like this, even though I do believe that my neighbor here is right, that we can negotiate and give him for a better rate. If he is not worthy of a, a unit such as this in our county, then I don't know who is. And I, and I just think that we got to, we got to be sensible. We got to be sensible. And we got to treat people like they are people, no matter if they're homeless or not, period. I've been living out here with my wife five, six years. When we first came out here, there was a place on 19 called The Act Center. And Dan and Miss Julie was running that. We know Dan and Miss Julie very well. And we served there with them during Christmas and Thanksgiving. And they had so many homeless people that used to just be there. And then you had people doing Thanksgiving and Christmas who you would serve the meals to. And, and Pasco, it was, it was, it was good. It was a good thing. And I understand that the numbers have been up. But there's, there a particular place caught fire and it burned down. And we've had some trouble where the numbers keep going up. And I think that what I've seen, if I could say this to everybody on this side of the room, this is the most, the most, and I want to also commend our commissioners for you guys putting this all together. I met Mr. Don a few weeks ago. I, for the first time as a citizen, I'm a pastor. I've touched homeless people. I'm sorry, I'm going to hurry up. I've touched homeless people. Yes, ma'am. I've touched homeless people through ministry in Clearwater, Largo, St. Pete, Tampa, in Pasco County. Okay? And I met Mr. Don. I met in this room tonight. This is the most I've actually heard about the solutions that you guys have for Pasco County. And as a resident, because I am a resident, I am proud to hear of the solutions that you guys have. I want to hear more about it. And I would like to say that Mr. Nicky, who was a vet, that me and my wife ended up paying for him to have a hotel room that particular night. Because he could not be on the street. We didn't have it to continue paying for his hotel room. We just had it for that one night. I think he's more than worthy, and individuals just like him, of these type of options, of these type of solutions. And as a citizens, I'm looking for my commissioners and the people who work for the county to provide solutions. Because people need help. That's why I'm here. God bless you all.
All right, we have Lisa from Holy Ground is here. And we'd like to have a couple, say a couple of things.
I was trying to get Marsha to speak for me. How's that? I don't know how many of you like me or don't. I might need an escort when I leave, but that's okay. You don't mind, do you? See there, got a buddy already. Jack Mariano, man, my heart. I mean, you, you toured our place. You don't come empty-handed. And I don't know how many of y'all do or don't, like, happy with him or whatever. I'm real happy with him. Because it's a man who's come in his own vehicle and brought us water with no one who even toured us at the new place. I'm still housing homeless people, but I didn't make the board. I don't know why. But I'm okay because they call me a one-man band. I don't really know. I know when people are homeless, I do know this much. My code enforcement, are they gone already? Ain't you one of them? Okay. Code enforcement, I have a problem with them. When I moved, I mean, I was running 33,000 hot meals a day, sleeping 100, 150, 200 a day at the old holy ground. At the one on Denton Avenue. I was there for 27 years. I mean, I worked with the sheriff's office so much, I wore clothes to bed. I didn't know what pajamas were because they knock on the window. This season, can you take one more? Always. I believe four years ago, you ended up with this problem when I had to move. Because I was always the one that took them. And I better them down anywhere. And then my momma said, "If you don't tack that furniture down, bolt it to the fair, you're going to move it." And that's the truth. I would. But then I had to get put on new property. Code enforcement, everybody came. It was a big mess. Then they give me all these, these things to do, which is, that's their job. I'm not down on them. Thank you very much. Did it? But I made sure I did every one of it. But when I look at an officer, state trooper, that's out on the road trying to protect your community, pull up in my yard, two or three are calling it down. This season, can you just take one? Little code enforcement's in bed, right? Anybody? Yeah, code enforcement's in bed, bring them out. And I, they can't see, they can't sleep on my patio furniture. You know, I'm not putting a tent over them. But it's not going to rain tonight. I know some of this is funny, but it's the truth. I had two state troopers when we was in Raleigh from '75. They're trying, they're traveling, they'll bring them wherever you want them. And then you got to get out the wheelchair, get out all this stuff. Then you got to bring them to you. I want to go to bed, but now I got to feed them, potty them, bathe them, bring them out here, tell them how to love them because they do. And then I go to bed, turn on the ring, watch them. Now I talk to them. "How y'all coming out there?" "Yeah, I'm okay. Got a nice comfy pillow and comforter." That's what I'm doing every single day. I've been doing it for 30 years here, in this community. 30 years. It'll be 31 in August. I'm not looking for an attaboy because I'm not going to get one. And nobody ever pat me on the back when I got 100 homeless people in my... I don't need an alarm system. I don't walk myself out of the car. I just say, "How many of you got B and Es?" They raise a hand, they come and I knock the car. I have the best alarm system there is. When they feed, we're here. We do not bite the hand that feeds them. I can go out there today and walk in the woods and they wouldn't touch me. They wouldn't cross a hair on my head. People are retiring in the, in the sheriff's office before me. I say, "Y'all all retiring?" I'm never going to retire. I'm going to be here and take my last breath at the holy ground. And I tell you what, if you have questions, there are so many good questions here. But there's a fine line. I see this line right here. Listen, it ain't y'all versus them, or them versus you. I know her. I know Starkey. I know Jack. I know Marsha. I know them. You called me for the meeting to ask me numbers. I don't get the count. I don't know why they don't come anymore to care the homes count for me. But that's all right. Because it doesn't matter. The problem's there. What's our solution? And that's what she's saying. What's the solution? You think they got all the solutions? I didn't have all the solutions. I want tents in my yard. I'm not near a school. I'm not near anything. Hey, when I moved in my new place, it was called a... I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Because we knew we had Castle Keen Street. And then all of a sudden, they got the, what do people call this, security people out there? They put my cameras, put them straight at us. I'm like, "Hey, we're here. We're here." And we ain't nothing there. There is nothing where I live. We own two properties, one house next to us. That's it. He got his gun out, but that's all right. He didn't shoot nobody. So, we're good. But we don't have, we don't call the sheriff's office. When we have problems in the house, we take care of the house. We call a meeting. Anybody by me, somebody pray. You know, if you don't pray, somebody will get hurt. That's the way I see it. We can call on somebody, but I call on God. However, the point is, I'm still housing them, folks. And as many as I could, I would. I've got a vacant piece of property. We could grade it down. You could put, you know, 40 or 50 tents in there and then start moving something. and then start moving something. I already have a number one man band, that's what they call me. They used to call me that all the time. I don't want to be a one-man band. I want help, I want people to help me. I'm getting older faster. I don't even get a vacation. Do you take up a collection of money? Take a vacation next week? Yeah. Come on, Jack, bring some water by and come and see it again. You know, instead of, bring a beer, man. No, I'm just getting out and drink. I do, but it's not condemned. And we got a condemned floor, so it could be restored as a center building for bathrooms and showering. And then the tents would be placed around it. So... And, you know, I mean, I don't know what I was doing, but when I started back in '91, I was putting motel rooms and I got that property. And then they all had to walk up the street with their banana boxes because I couldn't get my ride. One enough room. Anyway. Yeah, I've been doing it for that long. I've been through many sheriffs. And, I mean, they all like me, but, um, sometimes I get a birthday card, but... I mean, I do all the jail stuff. Oh. Oh, can I have somebody else's third, three minutes? I do the sheriff's department, I do the police, I do the, um, the elderly. But when I got to the new land, I was grandfathered in on the old land. So I can lay you anywhere. It didn't matter. Some people don't want to go in the building, like you said. They're not ready to go with people. They got social anxiety. So I tell them, there's a tree, calling yours. I could do that at my place. And it was commercial property, so nobody could tell anything. And it's fenced in. And when they, listen, this was the old-time sheriff's rule. When they find them out there to trespass them, when they find them out there on somebody else's property, they say, you got two choices. I'm going to give you two choices. You go here with me to jail, or you're going to Miss Lisa's. What is it going to be? They always went to me. They'll get a good hot meal. They're going to get spanking, go to bed, as prayer. You know, and that's just where it was. We all worked together. How do we do that now? We are doing it on a lesser scale. Can we up this scale? That's why I'm getting eager, I'm getting older. It's like, oh, Lord. No, 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 no. I took an average. I've been doing it 30 years, I can answer any question. Now, um, I've noticed it takes them three to four months to get on their feet and get a place to live. Now, now that the economy has changed, I have to make, I can run them compatibility. You can get two people that are compatible. They like each other to hang out, they do all the right things, or make, going places, getting the license back, getting driver's card, you know? I can make them compatible into a community where they're doing the right things. They're going to rent wherever they want. You don't know that they were homeless before they got there. But if they're a law-abiding citizens now, even though they were before that, they now are able to live in a community. And I let them stay for that length of time. Because she wouldn't let me buy it because she owned the property next to it. And, um, she said nobody would buy it. And, um... Guess what? Nobody still bought either one of them. But God don't like ugly, right? Hallelujah. Oh, you guys know Mary? Know Mary, about this tall, hunched little Mary? Huh? She doesn't read. Yeah. Everybody recognizes her more than they do me. And they call her up. I've been serving this community 30 years, Mary. All you do is walk. She laughs, yeah. I want somebody to write a book. It's supposed to be. It's called Pasco County, The Urban Legends of Mary. Because everybody knows her. I go shopping, they know her. You've got Mary? I'm like, wow, is this a show? Funny? Yeah, I got Mary, she's doing good. But yes, I have a lot of elderly. A lot of elderly. Because they cannot afford a place on what their income is. We do not have the ability to put them in 55-olters and your ALFs. If they don't make enough money to stay at them, they have to get that other money from somewhere else to help them stay in those, so I keep them too. And I do, I'm a super. I give them means to cook. Go on. Okay. Thank you.
And any person that we did know that was there, we weren't afraid of.
Amen.
That's a problem I think most of us are afraid of. She has to discuss how long it takes. Now, I looked up all these different places and you're saying, well, this one's there 15 years. This was there only a year. They have no data as to the success rate of putting people in these type of living spaces. But that's not enough. But I watched $4.7 million go down the juke because all they do is just get people off the street. You cannot say that you can take someone that's been living in the woods for a year and say, here you go. Here's a house. You know what happened? This house now had 50 people living in it because they wanted their rents. And it became just a place to keep their stuff because they didn't have a structured roof over their head. And that owner was paid a year-end payment. Now, this particular one, 15 properties. I know, I have pictures. And if anybody comes by, you know the address, I can send you. And he said, I can give out those addresses. It's not a success rate. She has a success rate. And you know what? She has conditions. There were some people who were not using drugs on her facility. They were respectful. They had to listen to the word of God, whether they believed in her God, their God.
Yeah, I don't matter, just get one. You don't matter, just get one, will you?
You need to be straight and not on drugs. And that's the big problem I have. You're using mine. I have to save every month for my little bit of taxes that I pay. And that's a lot of money for me. But if you're going to say, we're going to pump down, I just saw that the figure of $11 million now is broken down. There's kids in school that have food insecurities every day. If you want a list of where that money could go that's going to help people that are already paying taxes and are functioning members in these communities...
They need a good job. They might want one. You never know. You never know.
I was unaware of any of this until one sentence in one article that said that this was this meeting taking place on a date, not where, not what time.
Oh.
And that was just kind of foul.
I found it at the library.
She wouldn't post the meeting time because she wasn't confident that I'm going to be there to murder and cancel this again.
Oh, well. It's all good. Guess where? You're here now. The place was packed out. We're good.
All right, question for the...
I'm not even part of it. I'll go ahead and go to her now. Here you go, ma'am. It's your turn.
So I worked for United Way of Pasco County for seven years as their finance director. And I know all the nonprofits from what we funded for them. And after I left there, I sat on panels. I sat on panels with the Homeless Coalition and tried to get them to spend their money wisely where it was going. And I asked about six to seven years ago, the Homeless Coalition, Summer was in the room with me at that panel discussion. And we were talking to the Homeless Coalition. And I said, why don't we fund the tent cities like they do in Pinellas at that time? And I was told, that's not good. Now, today it's coming as part of a plan. But I'll tell you, the homeless, what we used to say United Way was, there are two types of homeless people. The homeless that want the help and the homeless that don't. And when I, we ran cold winter shelters. And I would have homeless people come in the door and ask for a blanket. They did not, we used to tell them, go to the homeless shelters. They're there for you. They wanted a blanket. They wanted to live on their own outside because they were challenged in these shelters and buildings that you put in place or want to put in place for them. They don't want to live like that. They want their own rules. So you, more or less, if you're going to do these type things and $15,000, I get it, the veterans are neat, I mean, they need. But then you want to deal with the St. Vincent de Paul. That is one of the centers that can get them into the homes. Why are we not giving them money to help those agencies like the Holy Ground, like the Women and Children's Battered Shelters that we have in Hudson, the, um, the Hope, uh, the Rope Center? They have the facilities already. Why are we not adding to their money to give them the abilities to house more people? Why are we putting another building or...
All right, so let me ask you a question. I'll do a poll.
Amen, Jack.
Uh, no, she does a phenomenal job. And she takes anybody in. And, and, and she does a phenomenal job. She gets them working. She's got that new piece of land, which I think is even a better piece of land than the other one just because it's tucked away, you got room. How many of those, those, uh, units there, pallet homes? How many could you fit in that one back section there?
Yeah, and they already have, um, Jack, they already have, um, there's eight RV spots for the bank to divide that power.
To run more of those buildings at once, in other words. So the water's already there, the power's already there, there's just nothing there. They have even the concrete slabs there. I wouldn't know it, I'd have to go find out because I don't know dimensions. I'm not really good at that. But...
Her vacant lot that she has next, her lot is an acre. The one next to her that she needs cleared is .46 acres.
Okay.
So it's more than the other one I had. The other one was 1.1 and 1/2, 1 and 1/4. But I'm a little more than that, about an acre and a half, two acres.
We're not using our availability of these shelters to help them get more people in and not you guys having to put the bill or putting on your shoulders as the county commissioner.
Yeah, but for 30 years, I've never asked. I loved her, yes.
So if I can just mention, I just want to fill what she had to say. So Marcy Esberg is here. She's our Director of Community Development. These are all community development block grant dollars. They're federal dollars that come in. Any agency can apply for these dollars. Any agency. Marcy, I don't know, we just went through the, the, the open enrollment for that. If you don't apply, you don't get. And unfortunately, there are rules and stipulations because it's federal dollars. There's no getting around it. So Lisa was more than happy to apply for those dollars. St. Vincent de Paul has gotten millions. Marcy, you want to tell them how much money? St. Vincent de Paul has gotten millions.
They have, so we just, we just spent, uh, over $500,000 to buy a new shelter for Catholic charities. It's on, uh, so they're, so Felicity House. And they've just opened it up and they're putting women in there. Uh, you saw a picture of Rosalie Rendou, which was used, uh, community development block grant COVID dollars with ship money to rehab eight units of permanent supportive housing. And that was him. And we, you know, we have on the books getting ready to do 33, uh, one-bedroom affordable units that will be Ozonam for as soon as the board, it comes to the board and the Board of County Commissioners approves that. We have 77 units of, uh, affordable housing for veterans that's supposed to go up on Massachusetts Avenue. So we have a lot of these things go, going on. The, uh, you mentioned Catholic charities. Uh, so with Catholic charities and the Homeless Coalition, we put $1.2 million into a county-owned property, which was the Old Boys and Girls Club. And that's what we opened the family shelter for. So we've put a lot of money into these organizations. You ask why we don't just go to these organizations? Because they all have limited capacity. So we really have built up a lot of these organizations. And we do expect that in any of these options, this isn't going to be the county running it. These are going to be our nonprofits running it because they're really the arms and the feet of, of the people. But, uh, uh, and, and that's how we do it. Um, but there's been plenty of money. And that $4.7 million went to house over 255, uh, households, 368 family, uh, individuals in one year. And... We, uh... They were all still housed last year. And we made sure that they got vouchers and things like that.
Being functional members of society, getting a job, working, sustaining themselves in their families.
So that... So that, I, I believe that you're saying that you have an expectation that everybody's going to start here and end here. That is unrealistic.
No, I think they're not setting goals.
That's unrealistic.
That's where I have the $4.7. I have the video, I replayed it like five times. So I knew where I was coming from. I was a certain order that they set with old people, the veterans. I mean, there was certain criteria that they went down. But the fact is, you are just putting a Band-Aid at our money.
No.
You're putting them in my backyard.
We are...
Organizations that she's mentioned are in your backyard, the Roach Center.
Holy Ground.
Let me tell you something. No, that's a losing right now. Panhandling. It's freedom of speech. If you have a fireman coming out, they do their, um, their filibuster and they do their fundraisers. They have to be permitted. Why can't you have them get a permit? And if they're panhandling, police officers, they wear a permit. They don't have a permit. No, you got enough.
Their panhandle for these people are... Whether they're in the hospital, they've been hit by a car, or car insurance. It's brutal. They're putting them in a hard time. We're paying for them to be guarded.
Okay, I just want to, I've listened to a lot of things tonight. And I too am a pastor. And over four years ago, I was homeless. It doesn't matter if everybody that gets housed makes it to be successful, a successful contributing member of society, or just one person. Because that one person tonight is me. As far as the panhandling permit, that was a question I was going to ask when I got a chance. Because I know in Sarasota County, they did pass a rule, an ordinance, a law, I don't know, that banned panhandling. And I wanted to ask if anybody knew the number between, the difference between panhandlers and actual homeless people panhandling for money? What, does anybody know what the difference is? Okay. Because they're, they did successfully do that in Sarasota County. Um, so there is no more panhandling in Sarasota County. But that's a whole, you know, that's just a part of the problem. But homelessness is not a one-size-fits-all. Everybody that's homeless is homeless for a different reason. My brother is still missing in Vietnam, 51 years. So I'm very passionate about homing veterans. But I'm also very passionate about homing elderly people. I'm pushing elderly here. And, you know, there is not a day that goes by that the trauma of being homeless does not live inside of me. And if my bank account falls below a certain number, I go into an absolute panic, a full-blown panic. Because I know what it's like to be homeless. And the idea of being homeless again as an elderly person terrorizes me. It absolutely terrorizes me. So to hear that we have the numbers in Pasco County of elderly people that are homeless, it just makes me want to weep right here. There are women and children that are homeless because of the economic crisis that this country is in.
Homelessness has changed over the last few years, especially since the government.
It has. Well, there was an economic crisis when I was homeless. And I had to give up my son because I could not take care of him. I was able to get him back when I got back on my feet. But I had to, had to make that hard decision to let someone else care for him while I couldn't. And my homeless situation, I'm going to tell you, people, my homeless situation went from bad to worse because I was just a very young woman at the time and a single mom. And I ended up being a victim of human trafficking. Back then, they called it prostitution. So, yeah, you're looking at a whore too, not just a homeless woman. I hope that makes you feel better. Well, after being trafficked for four years, I was able to turn state's evidence on the individual that was trafficking me. And it was just all up for me. Amen. He went to jail for six years and then dropped dead of a heart attack when he was released. Karma is a beautiful thing. And God is even better. So... And yes, there are people out there, because I've served the homeless for many, many years, trying to give back. And there are homeless people who just want to be homeless. And you can't deny them that. And there's nothing wrong with that. If they're not sexual predators, they're not leaving needles on your lawn, and they're not stealing from you, leave them be. They're living their best life. In that, in their mind, that's their best life. Just because it's not the best life you would live, it doesn't mean it's wrong. Leave them be. I said, if they're not leaving needles on your lawn and they're not stealing from you and they're not sexual predators.
Yeah, it's, all right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Thing for a second. When, going back and when he brought back up the pictures of the housing, When, going back and when he brought back up the pictures of the housing, um, you've been to Club Wildwood, you know, with our water issue and everything else. My question is, for that fifteen grand, are those things all going to be raised? Because we're all in a flood zone. I, I, they just look flat. I'm, I'm just seriously curious. The tents and the, the other ones, you said they were hurricane, a hundred and fifty mile an hour, I do believe you said, are they going to be raised up also? I mean, because we are...
They're on, they're on concrete pads.
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm asking, are they...
I know what you're talking about, so that's like, nobody wants to live on the west side of my feet.
Yeah, I mean, I think your question specifically is, is like, if it's, if, we're not looking for flood zone sites, so we're looking for sites that, yeah, Commissioner can...
They hit the base flood elevation, so yes. So, and then, and depending on the sites, it's, some sites on like, like the Rope Center, when we built that building, we had to raise that thing up. Didn't make sense to me, I've never seen water up that high over there, why would it have to be that high, but we did. Um, down in Legion Lane-Vanderen, uh, we bought fifty-one lots there, that was going to like help a lot of people for low income, et cetera. Habitat walked away from it because they had to go spend extra money, thirty grand or so on the houses, they were still in the flood, flood zone, so they couldn't do their program.
My twelve feet off the ground now.
Right, so...
It just changed our flood thing, and I'm thinking either a lot of elderly people are saying they're homeless in this town. I know, most of the people that live there are going along three steps.
Yeah, so, good, good question, again, no, no, no location's been picked, we're looking, we're going to look, look at all different alternatives. And I, I will say, I'm, I'm going to go check on Lisa's flood elevation over there, if some of those buildings work over there. She's got one stretched, I don't even know about the extra land yet, so we'll check that out too. It may be good for her to, to try and help her. And if it doesn't work with community development block grant money, maybe we'll use just general fund money to go, because she's doing a great service for a lot of people, helping them get up, and if it gets a few people out of the woods, so they don't burn the neighborhood around them with their tanks, that could cause fires, cause you, cause leisure beach, et cetera, uh, they don't leave their trash everywhere that gets caught around, um, and I will say, one thing with the Act Center way back when, that was designed to be a senior facility that the Colbs were taking care of. It later turned into the big homeless field. And I will tell you, I've talked to them after they were done, they were relieved that the place had burnt down, so they didn't have to deal with the negativity of the homeless people were treating them. They were spat on, they were swore at. So, believe me, they felt better not having to go deal with that issue anymore. Uh, but we want to try to help great people like Lisa, what she's doing, um, the Rope Center, another great place that's doing the right thing. Catholic charities, I will tell you, from some of the stuff I've seen them do, I didn't have any idea they could do as much as they could, I want to try to look at that too, because I don't think, unlike what was just said, I don't think it's right to live, to live in the woods. When you've got our deputies that are out there, with our code enforcement people that have to go in there, there, there you go, um, that have to go defend themselves because they've got machetes in their hand because they feel they're entitled to that land, it's not theirs, it's wrong. It's wrong. It may be their best life, but it's not for everybody else here that's trying to be productive. I want to try to help them, anybody with mental illness, we want to help them right after, right away. Opioid addiction, we've got an hour of funding supposed to go try to work with that, we want to try to help them every step of the way. But the people that can work and can get out there, you know, just give, give them a place, I don't care if it's a shell of a building that they don't like, I don't want them to like it there. All right, I don't want them to be comfortable there, I want them to be there so they can be safe, so they can have their property safe, and they can live in a lady who we had right in front of Summery for how long? On the sidewalk there, that wouldn't come out because she was raped in the woods, doesn't want to go in there again? I mean, I think it must marry. Um, and then, you know, these guys were out here trying to get her out, show us the problem out there, trying to get her out. I said, "Look, she's got a shopping cart, she stole it, arrest her, get her in the jail, at least she's off the street, and she can be safe until we can find a better way." And then maybe with something like that, maybe would trigger her to say, "You know what, I don't want to go in there, I'll go over here." I mean, it was that desperate a thing to, to, to make something happen, so...
Right behind you, right back here.
I didn't have a question.
You have a question, or say something?
I came down here to volunteer, so if I could hook up with somebody to volunteer...
Talk to Lisa right over here.
I was thinking about what you were saying, and I was thinking back when I lived in St. Petersburg, they had a problem with the tent cities there, and they just basically, their solution was just to destroy the tent cities. So they took them all away from them, the people, and they, on the street. My son was at Seminole High School, and his teacher made these, uh, they all got together, they got the wood from like Lowe's or Home Depot that was donated to them, and they made little, single housing with, uh, solar panels on them, and you have facility that you can make to like wash and things like that, and that was done from the schools, and I know because, you know, my son was involved in it. And if, on a bigger thing, maybe a low-bearing, uh, property that you were thinking of, we have a lot of Band-Aid hotels and on US-19, you know, we can implement some of these programs, people and volunteers to help on different levels.
The hotel isn't always the way to go because of the environment, your child...
We're protecting lots.
I mean, you gotta, you're just...
That's why I'm saying...
She's saying purchasing, purchasing hotels.
Probably mostly a drug arrest, places like that, right? So the, one, one of the things, at least with a shelter, like the Holy Ground, like the Rope Center, they try to keep everybody so they're straight, right? I mean, if they're going to fall off the wagon, whatever, you're going to deal with it, but for the most part, we don't want to have one bad apple destroying everything else or filter it in. So they can come around, they can go walk down the neighborhood and go steal something because they needed something else. Um, so if you want to help, please help the Holy Ground, help the Robes, Rope Center, Catholic charities, another great group. Um, and, and I do want to, especially as we're looking at these alternatives, which I just saw it for the first time probably last month, that may be an alternative, and for your side, I was thinking it could fit on that one side.
When they did the whole... I just wanted to stay there, my car, it's under twenty-eighty street, when they came up with this idea. I actually was swept away by the sheriff's, I threw the post there, and I was back toward his car to Mayor Baker's office at that time, and I'm like in a police car, like, wow, I've never been there before. Eighty-five minutes before, but she realized it's kidnapping, you know, she, you're like, "We gotta take this away." I took him to Mayor Baker's office, he asked me, "What can we do?" And I said, "Well, the homeless are the ones that you tell us in your county." I know the violence, he, he said, "Yes, we talked to the Board of County Commissioners, they said, 'No, you can't have her, you've got to send her home, she takes care of ours.'" But that was then, and we were able to communicate with them, they needed extra bus fare to be able to do their jobs, because even though they get the job, then they only got a week's worth of bus fare, but it takes two weeks to get a job. Now they can't do the job anymore.
Now, I will, I will say this, we haven't done this for you yet, um, I'm not sure if we did even with the Rope Center or anywhere else, but maybe we can put a program in to give a free bus fare while someone's living with you to go through that. That's something that wouldn't cost the taxpayer any money, it's already been going. Has, have we tried that yet? The Rope Center does, right? Have we helped, have we helped the Holy Ground yet? All right, have we, have we helped, have you helped, have we helped your people yet with bus passes yet? Lisa?
You have not, because you asked not.
Okay, so now, 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 now we're, have, have they helped you with bus passes for your people yet? Okay, so we want to go, we want to, we want to bring that, I'll bring that to the board meeting tomorrow. All right, so it's, but, but really, if you've got people that you're helping to go on, and let me, let me say something for the churches, as far as like, like for trying to help, I will tell you that there's probably so many camps you'll go to, and every bit of food that you bring in to go to them, it's got left behind and becomes trash. I think if you could reach out and maybe look at helping Lisa, helping the Rope Center direct right to there, and let's slowly get them out of the woods and go, and that may be a better way to go as far as all those things, because when they just can come in, they're going to keep, keep living in the streets and not, and not getting out, she can help them get them back on their feet, the Rope Center can help them.
Commissioner, we have a couple of ladies here that have been waiting to speak that haven't had a chance yet, right back here, she's had her hand up. Oh, to respond, let him respond.
Let me just tell you, I'm, I'm here, I, I am Mike, my name's Mike, and I'm also an alcoholic. I've been clean for one year only. I am giving my life to God and whatever he wants me to do. I've given up a seven-thousand-dollar vacation in order to, to help the homeless and whatever. Oh, I got a voice. I have one thing to say, not everybody wants to be there, and just because they're homeless doesn't mean they don't have a right to have a clean pair of clothes while they're being homeless, or, uh, move, uh, food to eat, uh, for that day. Our mission, when we go out there, is not to support them, but to give them the things that God has told us to do. Take care of the people that are poor, that need help. Get, get down there and get into the dirt and filth in which these people live and say, "Hey, we'll help you, but you gotta help yourself." Our help comes from the Lord, Savior, Jesus Christ. We make them pray, we tell them, when we get there, "Look, we're not here to help you out of your miseries, that's not what we're here for. We're going to give you a meal to bribe you to come out, so we can pray to God for your soul and your life, and hopefully your faith in God will give you the direction to get you out of what you are in now." And I've been here for a year, and I've, I've taken the ambition to help one family, one, who got homeless because they raised the rent from eight-hundred to thirteen-hundred and couldn't stay, and they're in the wood with a child. And that's a, that's a family that I chose, and the entire year that I've been doing this with this gentleman right here, one family. The rest of the people, they're, I'm going to tell you, you probably already know it, a lot of them don't want to get out of the woods, that's their home, and that's not for me to work with. I, I pray with them, I tell them, "God can give them the answer, here's the book, open it up, read it, He'll give you the answers that you need to get out of here." But we're not going to get it by being in here and arguing with each other because somebody's in my backyard. I can tell you that during Chasco Fiasco on Indiana Avenue, I've got videos on my cameras in the front of my house of three people taking a, a bough moving, whatever you call, on Indiana Avenue, and they weren't homeless, I seen one of them go across the street where they're building a two-story house, and get into a, uh, the one with an L, whatever that is. There you go, one of those. So it wasn't a homeless person that took a crap in my yard, all right? So let's get down on our knees, let's ask God for, for an answer to this. If we all pray and ask God for help, we can't solve this the right way, caring about each other. Thank you.
But let me know, one of our staff people. All right, before you, before you leave, I want to get your, Brian, get with Brian right there, I want to, I want to try to make that move quickly, all right?
And by the way, she got a job.
Beautiful.
Hi there. My name is, my name is Linda Austin, I'm with Queen of Peace, um, Peace and Justice Ministry, and we've worked closely with a lot of different groups, particularly the Coalition for the Homeless, Dawn Anderson over there, who does phenomenal work. But something that we have learned as a committee is, and working with Dawn, is that without the infrastructure that goes with some of these, um, these people cannot move on to that next stage, okay? So I am so thrilled, Mr. Mariano, Ms. Starkey, that we're talking about this, because fine, I mean, I've lived, I've been a property owner in this county for forty-two years, I've lived here for thirty-seven years, same house, okay? So I love this county and feel very passionate about this. And so infrastructure I'm talking about, for instance, um, during COVID, they had some money to, uh, for rapid rehousing, putting people in, but part of that was they needed, they needed the household goods, they needed, you know, all those things, they also needed a place to go. And so we had, they had the money, but there was no affordable housing available, and that is still the case today. So we can do all these wonderful things, which is fabulous, but we really have to think the five months and six months down the line, or the two months down the line, where are these people going to go? Because your CNA, your assistant manager at Burger King, um, the manager at Walmart, they can barely afford any place to live, and they are on the edge, and we have to prevent that. And we have to prevent anybody from staying here for six and nine months. So we have to look at the affordable housing crisis that is right along with it, so that we're not driving down the street like we were doing for Coalition for the Homeless, we had a whole corps of people driving down the street, taking pictures of every, you know, apartment that was for rent, so we could make sure, we get the information to Dawn, so we can get somebody in there, you know, before they lose the money and that person doesn't have a house, okay? And that face of homelessness is not necessarily always, of course, you know, mental illness or opioid addiction or whatever, they just want to live in the woods. We've worked with so many mothers with children, they're living in the Magnuson, the, the bus goes there, they don't want to be homeless. So when I see this big blanket of what homelessness looks like, I don't think you understand how personal, you know, this is. It's you and me, it's your next-door neighbor who became disabled and can no longer afford. That's the face of homelessness, and these are the people we have, you know, we have to serve them. And along with this, we do need that affordable housing picture to go with it.
I can just add, so the county is very clear that we need affordable housing, and so there is, we've been partnering with Pasco Housing Authority, a lot of us here, and we are putting in affordable housing together, so we are working on that too.
There's something that we've been talking about and studying, I think Roseanne maybe gave you, Dawn, a brochure, and I wanted to talk to you personally, because I was at the last thing last week, there's a national program called, um, homesharing.org. It's a national program that's a nonprofit that has to do with meeting people, um, who have a house, they could be on the verge of losing their house, they're on the verge of homelessness, then you've got the person who can't afford twelve-hundred or fifteen-hundred dollars for the one bedroom, and what this program does, this is a national organization, is they've created a whole system and a program and a database that puts people together and matches them, and keeps that elderly person in their house, and prevents that from homelessness. Because at San Vincent de Paul Catholic Church, you can't believe how many times we have an eighty-two-year-old woman, eighty-five-year-old woman, they're living in their car at Walmart, and they're coming to San Vincent de Paul for food. This is happening every single week. It's not the twenty-two-year-old male, it, you know, these are real people, and they had a house, but their husband dies, they've lost their house, okay? So there are some national programs out there that are really pretty inexpensive, that are trying to, Dallas, Texas has used it for twenty-five years, Pinellas County has it, Sarasota has it, so it's, it's a, it's another housing, affordable housing option, that solution. Thanks.
We've actually formed a committee within the continuum of care, Roseanne is, uh, carrying it, and we're looking for folks to join in on that, and we're looking at a couple of programs. We've recently acquired the resources to look at our season.
Okay, yeah, we have one of those programs in Burlington, Vermont, it's probably one of the longest home sharing programs, and it's a tool of the toolbox. It's a tool, it's not going to, it's not going to provide for thousands of units, you know, like five to ten area of foreign people, they have, and that home share that works? Yes, actually. It's a lot of people, because it takes forty people off the street, and then they help everybody else out. But just, just move away, because I know everybody's getting tired, and everybody, this is not, this didn't happen overnight, I'm not a...
This didn't happen overnight, and this won't be fixed overnight. But I think everybody, first, we have to understand, we cannot push and kick that can further down the road. This cannot be a situation of not in my backyard, because it will be in somebody's backyard. So we all have to look at these solutions, and we have to have a certain element of tolerance. The best, the couple of the things that I heard that really rallied with me is, if it doesn't get too big, if we don't try to fix it with one solution and it's huge, it'll probably be a lot more tolerable. What Mike has said as far as these, uh, that, that, I, I know homeless people, I know, I know a guy who's living over in, I forgot the name of that street, but the picture that you had up over there. It, it's, it's, it's clean, everybody's taking care of it, they have a sense of community on, at Thanksgiving, they're all, each of them went into their kitchen and made something and came out and sat on the picnic table and ate it together. That's a lovely little setup for sixteen people over there. It's all for sixteen people, and it's good for those people. But there's another set of sixteen people that are going to need a different kind of a solution. And when we say low, low threshold, what, um, Hope, Center of Hope is doing, yeah, she has some rules once you get in there, but I would think that she's pretty low threshold if the cops are knocking in the middle of the night on her door and saying, "Can you take one more?" She's not critiquing them and saying, "Well, there's a drug addict right now," or something. Sorry, Holy Ground, yeah, so, so anyway, I'm, I'm awful with the names. But anyway, that's, that's the whole thing, so don't be so concerned about words, don't be so concerned about low threshold, or, or this, or that, or the other thing. And if you're looking for input from the community today, I think the resounding answer is, not one of these is going to be the perfect solution. And you need to look at your budget, and you need to look at the opportunities, and you need to fiscally and prudently look at what's the most effective and triage it. Identify those people that we can solve for fairly inexpensively and quickly, and get them housed first, and then look at what the next problem is, and start to build a ten, twenty-year program that you can sustain and that you have the funding for. that you can sustain and that you have the funding for. Because the last thing that a homeless person needs is to be put up in a nice place for six months and then to be back out on the street again. So whatever we do, we have to commit to for the lifetime until they can either move on or, or not. And some people won't be able to move on. Thank you.
All right, I think that could be the closing speech.
That, that could be well.
Does anyone else have anything else? All right. Let, let me just say, Deb Eubanks, thanks for doing what you did. Um, you know, the Sheriff's Office got a lot of emails from me the last six months, um, just, just for things we're just picking up, et cetera. Um, and, and as you say, we need to pick something for the long-term solution. I do like the thoughts of having some different segments spread out around. We won't feel the impact as much. Uh, when I get people like Lisa from Holy Ground, um, the Campbells from the Rope Center, uh, Catholic charities, to what they can do, all those opportunities, we need to look at all of them. I actually had a church up in Shady Hills that would actually like to get those 15,000 units, put them on the little complex right there just to get people out of their woods that are right up there, the own people that'll go, go to their own church and help them up. Um, we've got opportunities for training for people, for careers for people. There are opportunities out there to get yourself off the ground. But it's gonna take some big action.
Everyone...
Thanks to the Sheriff's Office, code enforcement, the Attorney's Office, zoning, uh, and my community development team for everybody, everything putting together. Paul, you wanna say something quick?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to remind everyone as you're leaving, please don't forget to leave your feedback on your way out, which option you like. And if not, please add your comments on option five. Thank you.